Welcome Ms. Ward. All right, Mr. Kimbo. Would you please call the roll?
Certainly, sir. Mr. Ankuma is absent. Mr. Castillo?
Here.
Ms. Gill?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Reitinger?
President.
Ms. Ward?
Here.
And Mr. Webb?
Here.
Great, thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. The next item is the adoption of the agenda. Would I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Webb. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Right, the agenda is adopted. Now we come to one of the more satisfying aspects of our meetings, recognitions, and reports. We have a lot to recognize today, a lot of great achievements, and we will start today with the... We have the Champions of Character Scholastic Bowl Team and Robotics Team 14-18. Let's start with the Champions of Character, please. Welcome, Coach.
Good to have you. I'd like to introduce our Champions of Character. These are from the Winter Sports behind our banquet in Washington. Extremely proud of these athletes who represent the integrity, respect, responsibility, and... Our swimming ladies could not be here tonight. Eventually, Ellis will cheer Victoria Run with girls' basketball and Julia Bear's swim. But I'd like the boys to come up and give you a little summary of them.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Douglas Foster. I'm a senior at York High School in my third year on the varsity basketball team. We had a very successful year, reaching the state semifinals in a piece. Before that game, we had won nine straight, a school record for win. Among our many other accomplishments was winning the Joe Cassio Christmas competition that also included several larger five-day schools. Our team was built on defense and teamwork. Quality shown through our five players made it to first and second team all district honors. I'm very proud of our team and of my last season of baseball.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Hello, my name is Christopher Marcus. I am at Jordan Mason High School. I've been on the swim team for five years. This year, we had a great season. We were undefeated in our district during regular season. We also swam a few meets outside of our region against both some schools outside of Virginia, outside of five-day schools. But we swam against schools such as Marshall, McLean, John Paul. We also attended the Ben Hare Invitational in the evening. And at these meets, we had many great individual performances as well as a team. In the postseason, we won tricks for the boys and girls. And the boys team placed first in states, and the girls securing second in both places. We beat a number of schools in a couple state records, and I couldn't think of a better way to end my...
Thank you, Mr. Marcus.
Hi, I'm Matt Minio.
Yes, sir.
Mike on the podium is on. They bring Mike to the side in front of the mic. There's a button. All right. Okay. I'm Matt Minio. I was the Champion of Character for wrestling this past winter. We saw lots of growth this season for our team and for the program. Much... Lots of new classes came out, which doesn't always happen, so it leaves lots of potential for years to come. We filled all the weight classes this season, which doesn't... It hasn't happened in a long, long time for the program. So that was great. And with that, we won, I think, about four times as many... I don't have an exact number. Four times as many dual meets as last year. So it was pretty good. In terms of postseason, about eight of us made to the regional tournament, and then two of us moved on to the state tournament, and then we had two alternates as well. It was really a great way to end my senior season. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, would you all please come on up, and we'll have a quick picture with you all in the school board? All right, thank you again. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Coach. And now we come to the next recognition, and that's Scholastic Bowl.
Hi. Sorry, I haven't got a speech prepared, but we had an amazing year this year. We were undefeated in our district and made it to states where we came third. And recently competed last weekend where we won... How many games were we...
Two.
Two. Two or three. And we've had an amazing season. We've made it to states for at least five years in a row now, and for that, we want to thank Mr. Scharf for his amazing coaching skills and for great leadership and inspiration to us all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else want to add anything? Probably one of the few times you all are not ready with a quick answer. So congratulations to you all. Well done. Come on up. And we'll have you all up to take a picture too as well. All right, thank you again, and congratulations again. And next, Robotics Team 14-18. A recent but wonderful addition to the agenda, Mr. Baloo.
Many of us in this crowd just came from theater practice, and we're wearing different hats here. And I'm not too sure the rest of my team knew it was seven o'clock instead of seven thirty. But I wanted to report the successes that we've had this year. We've been having a great time with robotics for the past eleven years. And during that time, we won two blue banners. We actually won two championships. And this year, we moved to the district model for the first time, which means we had to play at least two competitions and then go to the championships. Well, this year, we've won three blue banners in a row, and it's... You know, we're right now, you know, the number-one team in terms of statistics and wins for all of Maryland, all of Virginia, and all of Washington, D.C. So it's, you know, again, it was... The championship was really hard fought. It was some excellent teams. We played it this last weekend against... There was fifty-eight schools or consortiums of schools that were represented. We ended up being the number-one team at the end of each day, and we were the captain of the number-one alliance. And our alliance, after eight games, was able to make it all the way to the finals, and we won our third blue banner, which puts us in pretty rarefied company. There are, I believe, only seven teams in the world right now that have won three banners. And that puts us in the, you know, the difficult position of having to get ready to go to the world championship in two weeks. And we wanted to, first of all, express our deep appreciation for your support in helping us get there and your overall support for how we, you know, all through our seasons. And this is one of the manifestations that we have these little ribbons here. These represent the much bigger banners, which we'd like to put on display somewhere. But it was a really amazing experience. We had a good robot, but we also had a great drive team and a great group of scouts and programmers. And all three of those combined to really make a very successful season. We won twice the trophy for programming among a group of forty teams and at the district championship among fifty-eight. And we won the Industrial Design Award as well at one of the meets. It was just an amazingly successful season, and, you know, at this point, we're not too sure how far along we're going to go, but we think we're players now for the first time ever when it comes to going to the world stage. So that's, you know, that about sums it up. Any comments? All right.
Mr. Baloo, where are the worlds?
They're at St. Louis. They'll be the seventeenth...
Twenty-seventh.
Oh, twenty-seventh. Twenty-seventh.
The thirty.
A little later.
And we'll be livestreamed if you can't come with us.
Yes, this will be webcast, and we'll try and make sure we publicize all the times we're likely to be playing, though this is, you know, there are... There will be six hundred teams at the FRC level, which we play at. And there will be eight fields, and we hope to be at least in the finals of at least one of those fields. But who knows? We might be able to move on.
March Madness pales in comparison to this.
Well, we're playing against the best technical high schools and consortium of high schools in the world, and we'll get a chance to see them up close and personal. We'll get a chance to, you know, the comparison I make is that we're the Home Depot team when we're playing against NASA. And it's, you know, but yet, here we are, doing really well, but my drive team is just, you know, they've just reached their prime. We're trying to think of ways that we can get a little bit better. I'll tell you, they're nonstop about making improvements. And again, the idea, the insight that my scouts can bring to how to pick alliances. We did a risky pick this time. We weren't too sure. Everyone thought that we'd lost it. But after a little bit of trial and error, it worked out great. Our alliance partner was the RoboBees from Hollywood, Maryland, and the other one was from the collegiate school in Richmond. Both of those guys ended up being very, very, you know, good matches for our abilities. Anything else? Anyhow, thank you for your support.
Well, wonderful. Thank you and congratulations, and best of luck. Hold on, hold on, guys. Come on up.
Photo ops, that's right.
Absolutely.
We have the best archives, and we'll edit together some of the best matches of our season.
Are they going to pilot it at the high school? Are they going to show it, like, in the auditorium or anything at the high school?
Again, congratulations and good luck.
Actually, Mr. Baloo, one question.
Certainly.
Getting down to the nitty-gritty of what the next two weeks means is fundraising.
And we have been... We actually came and visited the city council last night. We've been appealing to a number of our sponsors. One of our principal sponsors, Booze Allen Hamilton, has already granted us an additional $2,000. We're, you know, we're in the middle of that. We're trying to make the costs of transportation and hotels and that kind of thing reasonable for students, but we had to reserve airplane tickets by five this afternoon, and that's where I just came from. And we're still not 100% sure we've locked that in, but once we have that, then we can sort out what else we can do to raise funds and be able to, you know, make this less onerous cost or fees for whatever the kids... We hope to bring twenty-three kids to St. Louis.
Right. Yeah, my only point is to people here and people who are watching and anybody else's, there are going to be fundraisers in the next two weeks. Go to them because...
All right.
It's a short time, and you've got to go, so...
Well, it's... We hope that you sometime would get a chance to see this, one of these events live. But again, we will publicize all the streams, and hopefully, you'll get a chance to get a sense, to see exactly how dynamic and challenging this game has been. Anyhow, thank you very much.
Thank you again. All right, moving on now to the next item of our agenda, public comments and requests. In accordance with School Board Bylaws 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. If you haven't filled out a speaker request form and would like to speak, please come up, and we will put you into the queue. And the first speaker today is Christopher Barnes.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak with you. I am Christopher Barnes. I'm a member of Thomas Jefferson Third Grade Team, and I'm actually here tonight to speak to you on behalf of my team as well as myself. I have a letter that I will share with you, so you may have a copy as well, but I'll go ahead and read that to you quickly. "To the members of the Falls Church City School Board, the Third Grade Team at Thomas Jefferson Elementary would like to express our support for the climate survey proposal discussed in recent meetings and featured on tonight's agenda. We believe this survey is vitally important to the health and continued growth of our schools. Like many other staff members and parents in our districts, we ask for your help in turning this proposal into a reality. All schools in the Falls Church system would benefit from the implementation of the survey, but as elementary teachers, we are best equipped to speak about the benefits to our own school. We feel that Thomas Jefferson is at a critical point in its evolution. A quick search of the enrollment and demographics reports from the Virginia Department of Education shows that our student population has nearly doubled over the past ten years, growing from a mere 398 students in fall 2005 to 780 students in fall 2015. Tremendous change has accompanied this tremendous growth. We've seen many shifts in our administration, programs, policies, and even our facilities. Different departments within the school have felt the impact of these changes in various ways, but one sentiment staff members from any corner of the school can agree upon is that our school is barely recognizable as the institution it was in previous years. As Thomas Jefferson and Mount Daniel both undergo yet another major change with the departure of Principals Bob Palermo and Kathy Hilleco, it is time for the district to pause and evaluate the changes of the past ten years and how they have impacted our troops on the ground, the staff, faculty, and school-level administrators in these buildings. The unique perspective of these educators will be essential in identifying the path forward as the elementary schools begin this next stage in their development. The information provided by the climate survey will be tremendously helpful to the incoming principals in identifying the areas of strongest staff satisfaction and concern. The survey will also provide a clear look at the reality of some of the contentious instructional issues raised by various staff and community members this year. It will yield solid data that the board and general school community can use to determine whether these concerns are the shared opinion of the majority of our faculty and staff or simply the loud protestations of a vocal anomalous few. As public school educators, we are regularly asked to support our instructional decisions with standardized data. It seems reasonable, then, that we ask for the same type of support behind decisions that enhance or impede our ability to effectively instruct. Some members of our grade level use an evaluation framework with students that's adapted from the Baldridge Model for Performance Excellence, plus, minus, delta, so named because of the mathematical meanings behind these symbols. Teachers use this tool to guide student reflection after projects, performances, and even simple daily routines. We ask the Falls Church City School Board to empower our district to undergo the same level of self-reflection by providing us with the necessary tools to do so. The most important of which will be the proposed climate survey. The board, central office, and faculty...
Mr. Barnes, your time has elapsed, so...
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I wasn't even sure where to look. Okay, thank you.
No, unfortunately, that's not permitted.
Thank you very much.
But thank you very much.
Conclusion for your consideration. I'll have a copy of my full letter for you.
And next on the agenda is Ms. Amanda Blanchard. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Amanda Blanchard, Representative for Falls Church City Education Association. We actually just came from that meeting and wanted to reiterate the fact that you've probably heard me say before that this budget cycle, as well as the health insurance changes, really negatively affect a number of individuals at the bottom and the tops of scales because of our recalibration and the minimal raise. For those folks that go with the plan that we've... You have adopted and that we have supported you in, the changes in the insurance really do have an impact on them, and we want to make sure that we think about that as we're moving forward. I know that no decision has finalized yet, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we can lessen that impact as much as we possibly can. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blanchard. Next, we have Allison Kuchma.
Good evening, Allison Kuchma, 813 Fulton Avenue. My remarks are in reference to a letter that I sent to you just not very long ago. I think Mrs. Skidell is trying to forward it to you. It's so if it... That's what it's about. There's a chart that you probably have by now. Last fall, a parent stood before a committee and made a motion for a chair and a co-chair of one of our parent-volunteer school board advisory committees to step down. She later came before you, and the events that followed called you to appoint two members to launch an investigation into the Special Education Advisory Committee and its leadership. Parts of these events led to the acquisition of public records. These public records of activities by our elected officials show numerous violations to laws concerning open meetings, records management, and the Freedom of Information Act. This is a breach of public trust, but it's also against Virginia laws. A group of parents, of which I am one, is requesting you act immediately on this matter by also appointing a member or members to investigate these violations in order to show a good-faith effort to establish the clear message to this community that you, as a body, find these violations unacceptable. What should be noted is that these violations are numerous, and the ones that I've... We have are just the ones we know about. Who knows how many there really are and how long this has been occurring? These parents intend to take these violations to an outside body to rule on these matters, but I respectfully request that you respond to my email and demonstrate your willingness as a body to uphold our laws. As a body, you continue to accept behaviors by leadership that offends our community, our teachers, our students, our parents. Teachers are leaving. It is part of a cancer here of which these violations are very much a symptom. Individual members tell me that they believe they see these behaviors, yet collectively, as a body, you utilize willful blindness to false statements to the public, misleading and disingenuous information, and actions unbecoming of a school district that asserts to be top-notch. There is nothing top-notch or world-class about these behaviors or these violations of the law. I stand before you respectfully requesting each of you to demonstrate your desire for an ethical school district and leadership with integrity by making a motion tonight to appoint members to look into these matters without hesitation. Any hesitation will be considered in the proceedings before the outside body. Thank you.
Next up, we have Melissa Dana. Welcome, Dr. Dana.
Good evening, Isabelle. Yes. Hello, school board. I'm Melissa Dana. I'm at 314 North Lee Street. And first, I want to say that everything I have to say seems unsophisticated compared to what Mr. Barnes just said. But I am here to support, once again, the school teacher-staff survey. And I brought an updated letter that now has 241 signatures from the community in support of it. The proposal that you have in front of you tonight is from the TEL survey, and I think it's a great starting point for us, but it is lacking in a few areas. The first one is write-in responses, and I support 100% Mrs. Gill's suggestion that we need to provide ample opportunity for our teachers and staff to provide write-in responses to questions, to explain, to clarify, to provide suggestions, professional opinions, ideas for solutions. These are all going to be vital, and I suggest to the school board that it's in your best interest to have that information, because at the end of the day, you're going to be left with survey results upon which you need to take some action. And you don't want to be sitting there scratching your head, wondering why people answered certain questions certain ways. More detailed information is better. Additionally, I believe that our teachers and staff want this opportunity to provide this type of write-in information, and we should provide it. The other is the question of whether this is a programmatic evaluation or a climate survey. And I want to reiterate the points that were made by multiple board members, that you cannot extricate your programs from your climate. Those two are intertwined, and I'd like to repeat what Mrs. Gill said, which is whether or not they are happy is tied to the things they do every day. And Mr. Ankuma said, "It's the programs that determine how the teachers feel." And Mr. Reitinger said, "Happy teachers make good teachers." So I would ask you all to please ask questions about specific programs. Let's hear what our teachers feel about RTI, HIC, STAR testing, NYPD, all of those things that we're interested in. The last thing I want to say is that we need questions about leadership from the central leadership and from the school board. This particular survey asks questions about leadership for teachers and school buildings, and if we want an honest evaluation of ourselves, we need the whole picture. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mark Cottrell. Or do we? Apparently, he is not here. Mark Cottrell? All right, we will go to Kiran Sharp next. Welcome, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to comment on the process that you've been engaged in for many, many months, and that has to do with the campus project and with Mount Daniel. And offer thanks for the recent opening up of the process to provide some very, very candid information about what's been happening to try to reach a solution. And I think it's been very, very helpful for the community to hear that information and to be able to digest what's been a very voluminous bit of information, particularly in the last few days. And also to say, I think that you're on the right track. It's been a long and winding and difficult road, but I think the adjustments that you've been making are very sound, and I think they augur very well for a completion of the process that is true to the values that I think our school system has and should be pursuing. And I would just ask that you take some additional time. I know you have on your agenda this evening a prospect of releasing the RFP with details, and that that would begin a new round of consideration by the two bidders. I'd ask that you delay that for a time, see if there are additional adjustments that are needed in the draft RFP. are needed in the draft RFP. I'd also ask about the Mount Daniel situation. I believe you've recently submitted information to the Fairfax County Planning Commission with a revised plan, again, I think moving in a very positive direction, but I think also the road there is still incomplete, and that further collaboration with our community, with the Fairfax County community, would be very productive in getting to a full completion of that process, and something that's really very beneficial to residents on both sides of the Fairfax and Falls Church boundary line. So I encourage you to keep up the good work and persist in a process that I know has been very, very difficult. I think the citizens have really come to appreciate with the information that you have provided, at least some of the great difficulty with which you're working, and I think everyone would appreciate opportunities to continue to work with you. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sharp. Any other public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on now to, oh, additional comments. Mr. Kimball.
Yes, sir. The board did receive a number of letters other than the comments made tonight. The first is from Tom Clinton, who is the president of the CBC, that's Citizens for a Better City, and he's writing the school board to let them know that the CBC Executive Committee did, in fact, formally vote in favor of contacting the school board and letting them know that the CBC Executive Committee supports the concept of conducting a regular survey of support staff, teachers, and administration to measure employee satisfaction and morale. Second communication came from Dr. Melissa Dana, providing information about the Apple Distinguished Program and Renaissance Schools Excellence Awards. There's quite a bit of detailed information from her on that. Another communication from Kristin Kraft-Stamelio concerning the teacher survey, and she writes, indicating that she would like to endorse the need for gathering qualitative data through the survey and allowing open-ended comments. The board has heard from the executive director of the VSBA extending congratulations for being recognized for exemplary use of technology in the Center for Digital Education and National School Boards Association Annual Digital Schools District Survey. So, congratulations. Mr. Bob La Genesse writes in with some concerns about the development of the West Falls Church campus property, specifically that educational and recreational needs need to be addressed primarily and first, and that any considerations for private development be postponed until the city's educational and recreational needs have been met. And finally, Dave Sikora, who is the chairperson of the Professional Employees Advisory Committee's peak, writes in on behalf of that group stating that they believe that a staff survey is a good idea, and that such a survey should include very specific questions that directly address a wide range of relevant topics, and that the survey should include all staff at all the FCCPS buildings.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kimball. We'll move on now to item 4.01, Approval of Second Reading and Adoption of Policies 1B.4, 5.1, 5.3, and 5.5. Mr. Horn.
It should be a relatively easy review of the four policies that the board reviewed on first reading last meeting. The changes that were suggested in that meeting appear in your copies tonight in blue line. Happy to take any questions on the versions in front of you.
Do we have any questions on any of the four policies? Anyone? Okay. Seeing none, could I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board approve second reading and adoption of policies 1B.4, 5.1, 5.3, and 5.5.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion passes. Now, we come to item 4.02. On the agenda, approval of the 2016-2017 Special Education Plan. Dr. Jones.
Thank you. And as a reminder, this is not the annual plan that Elizabeth Germer does for us each year, where she gives you all the results and the updates. This is a requirement with Virginia Department of Education, and it basically is saying where we are following policies and that we understand what we need to do in Virginia and that we have no barriers that would keep us from implementing special education programming. So again, this is a requirement for us.
Excuse me, any questions for Dr. Jones about this policy? All right, could I have a motion?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, but first, let me say, and I'll talk about this more later, at the special ed meeting last week, sorry, weeks blend together. We had training from VDOE, and before we had the training, Liz gave the rundown of the annual report, and when he was doing his training, he said, you know, one of the required rules was reviewing the annual report, and he said he had never seen one that was so detailed and so comprehensive. So I think that said a lot, and the committee actually did, took a step they didn't have to take. They voted to approve it. All they had to do was review it and not object, but they took a vote and unanimously approved it, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any other questions or comments? All right, would you like to make a motion, Mr. Lawrence?
I move that the school board approve the 2016-2017 Special Education Plan as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, we will move on to item 4.03, Special Education Report. Several weeks ago, the school board requested that there be an investigation and report relating to a motion by members of the Special Education Advisory Committee regarding the removal of two of the members or dissolution and reconstitution of that committee. Michael Ankuma, who is not here, as well as Aaron Gill, have been working on that diligently and interviewing many people. It's probably at least nine or 10 or more, and I will turn it over now to Ms. Gill to report on the status of the report and the progress of their work.
Thank you. So we, Michael and I have interviewed everyone who was a member of the Special Education Advisory Committee in 2014, 2015, and 2015, 2016, including our Director of Special Education, Ms. Liz Germer, School Board Liaison, John Lawrence. We have, I personally have read through every FOIA email related to this matter as well, so we've taken this very seriously, and we were hoping to have a report that we could issue tonight. Unfortunately, Mr. Ankuma has the flu, so we weren't able to finalize it, but we want to make sure that the report is comprehensive, it's factual-based, and we should have it up tomorrow or Thursday at the latest for public review.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gill. Any questions? All right, well, thank you, and thank you again to you and to Ms. Ankuma for your hard work. It's very much appreciated. Next on our agenda is item 4.05 regarding a staff survey. Oh, excuse me, I overshot there. I, yes. Item 4.04, Approval of TSA Overnight Student Trip. Dr. Jones.
And I know Mr. Lawrence probably knows more about this than I do, because his son is involved heavily with this, but they're just requesting permission for an overnight trip to Richmond, which is their finals, basically. I don't know if you want to add to that, Mr. Lawrence?
It's the state competition. So I guess I would just say, they went to regionals, they did very well, they've had more kids involved this year than they ever had. They won several awards, and they're moving on to state, and then I'm not sure where the nationals are, but they've always ended up in nationals. This is the third year, and I hope we can support them.
And I might just add to that, when we were at the Career Fair last week, they actually stopped by the table to see me, because they want to see it grow at the high school. So I guess it existed at the high school, but not at the same, I guess, excitement that we have at the middle school, so we'll be anxious to see the first group of students move on that are really passionate about it. So, thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Jones about this? All right, then, I would entertain a motion.
Well, since people know I have a semi-conflict, but it's not really that bad, I move that the school board approve the request for FCCPS Technology Student Association, TSA, to attend the Virginia TSA Technosphere at the Richmond Convention Center from May 6 to 8, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. Now, item 4.05, the staff survey. Dr. Jones.
Yeah, and I think our technical people need another minute, so if you don't mind, if we could go ahead and do 4.06 unless, is it on your screen, Lisa?
It's on my screen.
Okay. We'll give them a second.
Shall we take, I would entertain a motion to move ahead to item 4.06.
Still moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed or extension? Very well. Item 4.06, Dr. Jones, Authorization for Superintendent to Hire Staff.
4.06 is something that we request each year in the spring, and it's because we start interviewing and really looking for the very best candidates for our position, and often we are competing with other school divisions, or somebody will take, if they're interviewing in two great districts, they will take the first job that is offered often, and so we want to make sure as competitive as possible. And what this allows me to do is a principal can recommend that candidate, we can then go ahead and cross their paperwork, tell them what their salary is, and actually know that they are hired, and then I bring them to you at the next meeting, and so you're notified of those new hires at the next school board meeting. But it allows us to get the best candidates and not have to wait for the school board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Jones about that? All right, would someone wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Falls Church City Public School Board authorize the superintendent to hire staff as deemed necessary from now until the beginning of school for the FY17 school year. The school board will be notified of the new hires at the next scheduled school board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. Are we teed up and ready to go? All right, we will go now to the staff survey.
Yeah, if you don't mind. So you have three attachments on the staff survey item tonight. You have the TEL Falls Church survey, which is the actual core survey, and I have a very short PowerPoint that, part of it is, a few slides were tweaked for us, and then the rest of them come actually from the New Teacher Center. And then I also put the Fairfax survey back on here again, which the school board saw at the last meeting, tried to go through and cross-reference what the core has on it, and so you could see the changes that Fairfax County did when they did theirs. And then the other thing that is on here is the actual proposal, so that you can see the cost of that. So Teaching Empowering Leading and Learning is the TEL survey, and so that's what it stands for, but it is specifically designed for teachers. So they don't have a survey for support staff. It's specifically designed for teachers. There is another company that we actually could look at for support, also for parents, also for students, and that company will actually even drill down as far as if you want every individual teacher to get results from their students, which is kind of a fascinating stream, but go ahead, thanks, Lisa. So how is TEL derived? It was actually first used in 2000, I'm going to say 2, yeah, in North Carolina as a whole state, and they have been conducting it every two years. And the last update was, to the questions themselves, was done in 2013, so it's not like what they started with back in 2002. They've just stayed the course. And on the eastern side, sorry, go back, Lisa, on the eastern side of the United States, some of the big states, and you'll see the list of the states it's been used in, North Carolina, Kentucky, Delaware, Maryland are some big ones, and then you also have a lot of individual school divisions in Florida, Ohio, Pennsylvania, and Virginia. In Virginia, it's Alexandria and Fairfax, kind of our neighbors. There are a lot of school districts, as you can imagine, especially when you get to the rural areas of Virginia, that can't afford to do a survey. There are two survey platforms available through TEL. The first one is the self-service, and this was new in 2016, 2016. Before that, they have only since 2002 offered the full service. And self-service was primarily created for small school divisions that are our size, trying to get data and on a limited budget, and the core TEL questions are the same on the TEL survey, on the self-service, and then also on the full service. They assess in core areas, eight areas, and then if it's a brand-new teacher, they actually will get information from that teacher about have they had a mentor, how has their first year of teaching gone, have they had the support that they need. They do, on both of these platforms, it works through an anonymous code that's issued by the Teacher Center, and then they provide analysis. And in this particular option that's on board docs tonight, it is what they call heat mapping, and the heat mapping looks a little bit different than when you look at the Fairfax County one. So if you didn't look at both of those attachments, you might want to do that. The heat mapping that Fairfax County has had, I think it was three colors, and what they do on the heat mapping for this platform is it still uses a wide range of colors. So if it's something you need to focus on, it's really bright red. If it's something that's really positive, it's bright green, so you can still see all the colors. It's just the formatting is a little bit different, because they're done on different platforms. The full-service platform, one of the reasons this proposal is on here tonight is, first of all, the school board had mentioned that the TEL survey was a good survey, it's used around the country, and it's a strong survey. So when I started calling and trying to look at this particular company, this survey, the window is closed for full service. You cannot do it. They only survey January through May, and part of that is they are, they want to be able to give you excellent service if you're in the middle of a full-service survey, and when you see the list of how they carry whole states, they actually, you have to, in the fall, sign the contract, pick your weeks in the spring, and everything is very tightly scheduled with them. On the full-service platform, it does allow a school division of our size, and I say "our" size, to add up to 10 customized questions. They don't recommend over three, and if you add some of the subcategories, like you see on Fairfax, those count in the 10. So that's just kind of food for thought. The first pricing that we could look at for next year is $15,000. It was the first initial quote to do a full service. However, I expressed again to them today, I would like to see that number come down, and I would like to see the $6,000 come down. So they took it back to their contract people today to see if we could negotiate a better price than where it's sitting. I've expressed to them, we're a very small school division. When you look at the eight areas, this is just to kind of give you an idea of time. The school board has said that these are areas that we'd like to have information on, and planning time, things of that nature, facilities and resources, and how do the teachers feel about that? And we actually had that on our own survey during the budget, I don't know if you remember, but it was interesting that at Mount Daniel and the high school, for instance, how they feel about the facility was different, because they're the older buildings where we're working on that. Community engagement and support, how do they feel about the support they get from our parents and broader community, the student conduct, and I will say, a lot of the student conduct is, I'm not going to say it's irrelevant to us, but because TJ and George Mason just did a climate survey with an outside resource, it covered a lot of that. And I think I even, I made a note for you on the Fairfax County survey, where you can see they've tried to plug some of those questions in, but we have access to a whole nother survey by an outside company because of the grant, the PBIS grant. School leadership, also professional development, do they have enough? Is it in the right areas? Instructional practices and support, and then that ninth area, only for new teachers. And these are just kind of three points that the TEL survey says that, as they've given this since 2002, they've been able to, you know, connect climate with student achievement this since 2002, they've been able to, you know, connect climate with student achievement generally across the country, keeping effective teachers, so you know where to target certain things, and that kind of where you sit shapes kind of how you see things. And some of the consistent benefits of the survey is that people in decision-making are afforded an opportunity to hear from a large pool. We'd hear from all of our professional educators on this survey. And again, I'll just reiterate, the intent is not to only survey teachers. I think the school board was, was strong about that, that you want to also do support. So you'd have to message that as well. But right now, there's, there's another platform available, but it is a financing issue for us, but I can bring that back to the school board. So school leaders are also provided, sorry, provided data from the NTC. So having the heat mapping done is great, because if you, if you use survey software like Survey Monkey, it's, you can actually go in and get pretty good graphs and charts. But having a heat map is, is very helpful for us. This just gives you kind of an overview, and on the far-left-hand side, you'll see each year, the different states or school divisions that have taken this survey. So you'll see there's some large districts, and that's why they schedule very carefully from January to May, and don't over-schedule, because they need to be able to handle the entire state of Kentucky, the entire state of Colorado. Most of the states that do it, do it every two or three years. And again, this is just showing you on the next slide. It's just, it's, you're going all the way back down to 2009. And what you'll notice is Fairfax County will show up in the early years, and that's one reason they have... Because my question was, why do they get to add more than 10? If they can add more than 10, we should be able to. And they will not do that. So some of their clients have been with them for a very long time. And then, yeah, this is just kind of giving you an overview of where they started back in 2008, and it really was driven by those whole states, and lots and lots of teachers have taken this survey. So the proposal timeline, and again, that's why it's on here tonight, this year, this would be our option, the, the full service is not available to us to add questions. That window is closed. What it would do is give us a baseline for the TEL survey, core content, and then between now and next spring, we would be working probably with peak or, or a survey group like we've done in the past, to figure out what are those up to 10 items that you would want to tweak that would go in the survey. And then, but we, even with that, we need to sign the contract for next year in the fall, or we will not get in the window. And to do this, to do self-service proposal before the end of the school year, is $6,000. And again, it takes them several weeks to set us up. You know, they do have to generate our numbers, we have to send them staff numbers, and they're in the middle of the full-service TEL surveys right now. So that's, because that was another question, is, well, if it's pretty much automated, why can't we just do it next week? But it's because they're balancing again where they can plug us in. And doing this one, we would have the results more than likely right before we go to summer break. But it's still a pretty tight timeline from their perspective. I think, is that when it?
One more.
Yeah, and these are just some of the key points, and as I've gone out and just been looking at the different companies, it is widely used across the United States and has a very strong reputation. And it seems to really have kind of replaced the Key survey that NEA had. And I know when we first started talking about this, I reached out to Manda and said, will you check with the rep and see if the Key survey is still around? And it wasn't, it disappeared. And this seems to have taken its place. And it was, it was very similar in that it was used very broadly. Does have a strong reputation. It also has comparable data to school divisions that are actually even close to us. It's affordable, as long as, it's not as affordable as I'd like it to be, but it's more affordable than what some could be, and it is scientifically crafted. Lots of, lots of information from it.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
So it really is making a decision tonight, whether you want to go forward with a baseline survey that is of this quality, with the idea that next year, we're going to look at full service, because if we're not going forward with this one, it just means we're not surveying this spring. And that's a decision for the board. So if we want to survey this spring, we can do the TEL survey, but if we, if we're not going to, then what I will do is put it on the back burner, so I can start working on it again in June, just because it does take a lot of time to look at different companies and spend hours on the phone and, and working with reps. So, so it's really a decision, do we want to do it now, or do we want to wait and be working between now and next spring on the full service?
All right, thank you, Dr. Jones. So any questions? Mr. Lawrence?
My main question is, what about non-teachers? Because I, I guess, even if we could add 10 questions that applied to people who are non-teachers, that still seems like it would, it would almost be insulting and token in something that was a lot more broadly aimed at teachers. So I guess the question is, how would we get to, to others?
Well, I think there are, there are other platforms, and I, actually, the survey I gave you at the last Panorama, the other company, that really looks good in, as far as having a variety of surveys. They actually could look more at support. There are several other platforms, and I think it's just, you're trying to not make one platform fit all categories, because what a facilities person wants to tell me about maintenance and trying to keep up at George Mason is really different than what a parent in the classroom is going to want to say. And I just think it needs, it needs a little bit more thought and a little bit more work, because it's hard to actually just get one survey that hits across the board, even for all of our different support areas. They're very different. And then if we, and I know the board said, first priority was teachers, so that's, you know, where we started with the survey, that is for teachers. And then parents, are we wanting to survey parents next year? And if we are, I think Panorama does have a good survey for that, which is a different platform. It is still anonymous, it's still independent, and it's much more affordable than the TEL survey. But I would have to bring that proposal back to you. And I will tell you, it's not, even to find the $6,000 right now, Mr. Kimball and I were talking about this today, as we're, you know, we're down to the wire at the end of this year, and we've had some expenses we did not expect to have. So we still are going to have to do some work to do this.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Reitinger?
Not so much a question as a set of comments. I have a, as Dr. Jones knows from some questions I sent her, I've got a number of concerns about the TEL survey. Some of them were prefaced in public comment. I think we definitely would like questions that have open comment fields, so that teachers could talk more. I'm a little worried that, as, you know, the list comes up here, and I, by the way, I read the full proposal and I read all the questions. I'm a little worried that the questions go just to school administration and not central office administration or the board, because one of the things I want from a survey, for example, is that we could do some board evaluation of ourselves and how good a job we're doing. It doesn't have programmatic questions, as we talked about, and as Mr. Lawrence just pointed out, it is focused on teachers and not everyone. Regardless of all those things, I think this is a good idea. And the reason I think it's a good idea is for very much the reasons that Dr. Jones said. We're very much near the end of the year. I think we could go out and probably use something with a, you know, a small contractor and get something quickly done, but it's not going to provide the degree of comparability to other school districts. You know, $6,000 for this level of analysis strikes me as valuable. And, you know, in short, I, I don't want to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. There's a lot I'd like to do, but I'd rather have half or three-quarters of an apple right now, not get the programmatic questions, not survey everyone, and get real statistically rigorous data that will tell us about climate and teacher retention than put it off for another year. And I, you, it is, it's now April, you know, the school year ends very soon. If we don't do something quickly, it's not going to happen. And so, you know, I, I don't see an alternative easily to get the degree of rigor and capability we want, other than to go with this proposal. And so I think it's something, I, I would certainly support doing as Dr. Jones suggests and using the self-service TEL survey now.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Ms. Ward?
I agree with you, Phil. I, I would like to see the comments, I would like the open comment fields as well, but given the time constraints that we're faced with and getting something started, just getting the ball rolling, I think it's, we should go forward with this, because we can learn a lot from this first go-round that will help us improve the next years. So I would like to see us go forward.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Ms. Gil?
Thank you. I would reiterate my comment that I think that, I, I do think we should go forward with this, and I would like to see us explore a survey that allows for open comment fields and not restricted to 100 characters or 100 words, real open comment fields. And I don't know if that's something that, if this isn't a survey that can accommodate that, if we can do, I'm not a survey expert, do a Survey Monkey or something that just lets people talk, because I have said it before, I think it's important to let the teachers and the staff tell us what they think and what they want to tell us, and not have us give them the questions and just say, this is what we want to know. And I agree with Mr. Reitinger that we need to include ourselves and central office as part of this, part of the people who will be evaluated.
Excuse me, thank you, Ms. Gil. Mr. Webb?
Everything has been said. I think we do need to move forward with having something done this year, because there is definitely the support in the community and wanting to see this get done this year. So as Phil said, the, trying to get the perfect, and stop this from happening this year is not, I don't think it's the right thing to do, but I think as we move forward with next year to do the full survey, I think that'll be the opportunity for us to, to do the more extensive, because I do want to know what all of our staff has to say, as well as the support staff, is just as important as our teaching staff. So completely understand that this year and timing that we're getting towards the end of the school year, it's definitely a little bit tighter time to be able to do that, but I think we need to do something so that we can get that information back in June and begin to start, hopefully, getting good data, so that we can begin looking at potentially what we can implement over the summer as we begin to prepare for the larger, more extensive survey for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Just a few comments of my own. I, I think taking this step is, is a good one, and I think it should be a preface to doing a larger climate survey, as I've said. Teachers and staff is part of our ecosystem, but it's not the entire ecosystem. And I think we owe it to the students to do a very broad and searching survey. I would also say that it should be rigorous, and it should be statistically valid. And so to the issue of open comments, I, I think that's problematic. I would say that in the absence of an open comment field survey, if there are questions or concerns, I would invite any and all to submit them, and we would be happy to hear from anyone in the community. Mr. Barnes today came here, and, and I commend him, because in many respects, he is the exception rather than the rule, so I would urge everyone with thoughts and input to step forward. I will also note that I told Mr. Sharpen-Tier that he was next, and I, I'll, I'll yield the floor to you in a moment. I apologize. And so I think that we, we should proceed, and this will be the beginning of a larger, rigorous exercise. I think it's also important, as we go through with this process, to remember roles and responsibilities, the various layers of our system, what the board is responsible for, what the superintendent is responsible for, what central office is responsible for, and what the building principals are responsible for, because I think it is important that we take care to understand each of those layers, what everybody's role is, and take action based on that governance model. And now with yet another apology, Mr. Sharpen-Tier, you get the last word.
Well, I just wanted to ask a simple question. Is the self-service survey, is that information, with all of the information collected in that, be included in a full survey that would happen the next year?
It would, unless we asked to change a word. For instance, in Fairfax Counties, they, they, when they talk about teachers working together, across the country on the TEL survey, it might mention like professional learning communities, but in Fairfax County, they call it collaborative teams. So you can tweak it, but the data doesn't change, but it just helps your, your staff understand the question a little bit clearer. So it does give you the baseline this year going into next year.
Good question, thank you. Which raises one other question. You, you talked about the window, and clearly, the results come quickly, relatively, or the self-service, the results will be available in June, correct?
It's before the end of the school year, and it's up to five weeks. And, you know, and with, when you work with a company like this, it's kind of, who knows? They may under-promise and over-deliver. You know, you just don't know. But it really depends on, I would imagine, what states are happening right now, because it's already, you know, April. So if they're carrying two big states in the month of May, they're squeezing us in. But then that's one reason, you know, for the smaller school district platform, you know, they put it together for affordability, but that's one of the reasons they can't do it, because they stay booked in the spring.
But it also, it's, in other words, the window seems to be, what was it, January through May?
January to May, yes.
It's not as if they're spending the fall and, and the late summer months crunching all this data. It's just sort of, they made a decision not to...
Actually, they may be, because when you're talking about an entire state, you know, they actually are doing lots of data, because they may be going in and looking at different school divisions from, you know, your lower SES schools versus high SES schools, and are you getting socioeconomic status?
Okay, thank you.
And so a state could be asking for data that we might not, as a school division, need. So they do actually continue to, to work on data at a large level. Depends, it depends on what state they're working with and what the package looks like. And they also do training. So let's say you have an area where it just shows up on the leadership side that there are several different things that they wanted to tweak. You can bring in trainers, and they kind of help hook all of that up as well. But those are all options, they're not included, you know, and they all come with a cost, but you can actually choose other parts of the package if you wanted to do something else like that.
Thank you. Any other?
I think it's on, I think it is actually on our option sheet, where it just kind of gave you an idea. It's a one-page sheet that had some things listed on there.
Any other questions? Mr. Lawrence?
Tony, two questions. Full service really only kicks in, I, I thought you said, we can have the same questions under self-service that we have under full.
Yes.
We just can't add...
You can't add anything to the self-service.
Okay, but, but in effect, we're not talking about necessarily $6,000 this year, then automatically $15,000 next year. We could do self-service again next year if we're happy with the questions that they've got.
Right.
And we think it gives us good results.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Just one last question, Dr. Jones. The survey that you referenced that was just finished under, under the grant, when will that, when will that be available?
I'm just going to ask a question for clarification. Does it allow for open-ended comments with the...
Right now, in self-service?
Or full service?
Well, that's, that's kind of a sticking point with them, and as we go into next year, we would have to have that discussion. Again, it's scientifically valid survey, they are totally against open comments because of that reason, and they've only ever had two, and it, where they were statewide, where they actually did it, and afterward, the state said it was disastrous, and they said, why didn't you tell us that? And they said, we did, you didn't listen. I had that conversation just today, again, with them. Doesn't mean we can't do it, I mean, we can push hard to do it, but it may be that, it may be more beneficial to do it in a different way.
Dr. Jones, so those survey results that were recently performed in, was it TJ?
Under the PBIS grant.
Yeah, and George Mason and TJ, is that right?
That's correct. Middle School did a survey that was different, and then through the grants, but they had done theirs a little bit earlier. And then the National Climate Survey that we did is actually an outside company as well. Lisa, do you remember, is it NCIS, National Climate? I'm trying to think what the actual title is. But they just got those results back, and I believe it's tomorrow that, yeah, because this is, we're having our response intervention meetings are, are the next two days, and so they'll be reviewing all of that at their site-level teams. And then Summer Manos, our RTI specialist, will get that out to the staff so that they can see those results. And there's some great information in there for us, especially when, when I looked at it, the student point of view, from the high school students and also from TJ, just in general, those were excellent. So I think you'll see that the, the climate part on kind of how people feel about their building, and do they feel safe, and all of that has been really covered well.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would entertain a motion. Mr. Reitinger?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board approve the use of the new teacher center to conduct a staff, particularly a teacher climate survey, using the self-service model as soon as possible this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Ward.[1795.48] Thank you, Ms. Webb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Extensions? Very well, the motion carries. Now, we'll move to item 4.07, to amend the fiscal year '17 budget request position title.
And this is kind of an unusual one, and that's why I put the attachment on here for you, because it's a little tricky actually for me to explain, but I felt like if you had a visual, it would be easier. So, what the high school has come to me and asked, and again, we are site-based, the principals prioritize what they think is most important in the budget for their school. And as you know, there are lots of things that are on the cutting room floor. So, as we are going into this difficult budget cycle, I think the staff and Amanda, I think, alluded to it earlier, are very nervous, because we know right now we have a gap of $245,000, and that is a lot for us to figure out in health insurance. And so, as they're trying to be proactive and just say, we, you know, they're very nervous about losing this NYPD coordinator, because they feel like middle school and high school, that it is essential, and they feel like it's really going to help them continue to embrace NYPD, move forward, and give teachers the support that they need. And what they have asked is that they have a computer science position, which has become, it's not filled right now. And that's because there are virtually no computer science candidates right now, not only in the state of Virginia, everybody around the country is experiencing this. And you might interview two people, but three people, but finding the right person for what they need for our high school. This is not necessarily a coding position. It's really more about the creative aspect of computer science. It's, the candidates are just not there. And so, instead of sitting on this position and going, you know, possibly into August and having it still not filled, and then the school board had to cut something in from the budget, and the school board cut the NYPD coordinator, then we've lost all the opportunity to hire NYPD coordinator. We already have people calling us, one or two people relocating from another state, because the IB network is pretty close, and they know that we may have a position, and some outstanding candidates are interested. So, the high school would like to post an NYPD coordinator tomorrow, take down the computer science, put the computer science on the table for you to consider. If something happens, we have to cut the budget. Now, ideally, we don't want to cut that either, because if a great candidate walked in the door in August, it'd be nice to be able to hire them. But they feel like NYPD is far more important than computer science. And I will say, the high school is really playing nice in the sandbox on this one, because they really, you know, they prioritize at each building. And this is, computer science is a 1.0 for George Mason High School. It's not a split position. So, they are willing to help out the middle school, so it's really like a .5 at each building. But they're saying, we know we run the risk of giving up a full-time position. But again, this is a staff request, and I would like to see us approve this, and then it would also allow them to get that job posted and look for a great candidate for it.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Any questions? Mr. Lawrence.
Not a question, just a comment. Michael and I went to the high school as one of our visits, and when we met with the leadership team, they stressed how important this position was, and that was two months ago. So, this doesn't really surprise me at all, even though it is, in effect, you know, they're losing, the school's losing half a position. But they see it as very, very important, so I think we need to listen.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All right. Very well. Would anybody care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board amend the position title on the FY '17 budget request from a 1.0 NYPD coordinator to a 1.0 computer science teacher.
Just a point of order, is that motion correctly worded?
Yeah, the way it's...
It's the other way around.
Well, no.
Yes?
Because it was taking off.
Okay. So, it's, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
NYPD becomes an active position?
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Webb, for the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. The motion carries. Item 4.08 is next, SCCPS health rooms mid-year report.
Lisa might have that position posted before we leave. If you look at the health room report, this is just giving you a big picture through February. The school board does not always see these, but I think it's one of these things that I would like for you to see more often, because we're talking a lot about the challenges that we are dealing with as a school division. And as we grow, so do these other challenges. When you look at the health room and you think of our current enrollment, you kind of scroll down, and you start looking at, you know, through February, we had 5,795 visits to the health room. There, you know, a lot of kids sent home, 12, over 1,200 medications given at school. If you look at the 900-plus vision screenings, on top of that, on the second page, you'll just, I'm just hitting on some of the highlights, but what teachers are expected to know about their children, not only with special education and ESOL and general education, but just the health issues to keep children safe. And we've had a lot of discussion about safety just over the last couple of days. But looking at individual care plans, thinking that we have 119 of those, people have to know those exist, that we have 582 of our students that have a medical flag list. Now, that's flagged, it's in the system. But again, when you get to secondary and you're teaching, you know, 100-plus students, that's a really difficult, difficult thing to keep up with. Our students with food allergies, again, I think this is, you know, 136 students. And if you're working in the cafeteria every day, you need to know those, and it's a challenge. We have 22 students who are on seizures precautions. And, you know, we do call the ambulances to our school. I'm not going to say a lot, but because children have seizures and things of that nature. But it happens, I think, more than the general public realizes. And then, when you look down on that bottom left, just on that last page, it's just understanding that all the faculty and staff that are trained in EpiPens, and every year that we have had this law in Virginia, we have used them. We do use the EpiPens. And the Glucagon, we have 22 staff that are trained in that. And again, a lot of these things are on top of just being a teacher or just being a para. And I just think, you know, people don't understand the complexities often of the job. And when you look at being trained for a colostomy, you know, we have eight staff members, that that is, that's a huge job for somebody to have that responsibility every day on top of the educational instructional needs that we tend to think about. So, I just, I think during a budget time, it was, it's a good time to share how challenging it really is. And when we ask for a position, if we say we need a special education teacher, or we need a classroom teacher, or a para, it's because we need it. So, just, I think it's great information for the school board to have.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Any questions? Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah. You answered the, my first question is, because I didn't remember having seen this before, but I would love to get this on a continuous basis, because this is a great snapshot. But I've got to tell you, when I first looked at it, I thought, oh, my God, our kids are sick all the time. And, I mean, the numbers look huge.
Yeah, right.
And I think having more of the film than just a couple of frames would be, would be great, because I remember hearing about the, you know, the flu epidemic at TJ, and I expected TJ to be the worst in terms of kids sent home, and it was George Mason by three times as much as TJ, which just surprised me. So, yeah, I would love to get this. I mean, obviously, not on a monthly basis or anything, but, you know, more than, more than once a year, but this is, this is great.
I was thinking mid-year, end of year would be nice. And that's just because somebody has to keep all this data and put it together as well. So, that's on top of the job that they're doing during the day. But I think if we could do the mid-year and kind of end of year to the board, that would probably be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any other questions? I think one other addition that would be interesting would be students who call in sick.
Oh.
That would be an interesting figure. I think another interesting area to explore, and it would be probably topic for another conversation, is concussion, sports-related injuries, and how often we do evaluations of those.
Yeah, I will say, Mr. Horn keeps a great chart on that. If you remember last year when we were talking about the turf issue, so we can have him share that again at some point before the end of the year, because they do have great data on that. And on the students on the call-in, interesting thing is, we still have a really high attendance rate. So, when you look at most of these issues, and I think that's one thing to note, they're not all going home, it's that we're having to deal with them during the course of the school day. So, and it is, it's a, it's a real challenge.
Indeed. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, item 4.09, budget status report.
Yes. I prepared for the board a budget summary status report for the school operating budget for the first three quarters of the fiscal year, July 1st through March the 31st. Cutting to the chase, given revenues that we have collected thus far and anticipate collecting through the end of the year, and that funds that we've either spent or obligated, and those funds that we anticipate or project spending through the end of the year, we're projecting a net ending positive position of $122,000. Getting down a little more into the weeds and the detail, both in terms of revenue and expenditures, a couple of items do jump out. On the revenue side, we're projecting that revenue will be, collected will be approximately $300,000 less than we budgeted. And that's due primarily to two items. The first is the bus cameras that were deemed illegal at the first part of the school year in FY '15, I mean, or in 2015 last year. The way that operates is that we actually show on the collection side that the revenues that are collected from those violations, and we book them as revenue. And then, on the spending side, we pay the camera company, you know, the expense for, you know, for operating those. Well, because we didn't, that was deemed illegal, we're not collecting most of the funds that we had budgeted and planned to collect, and that's about $100,000, slightly over $100,000. Also, on the revenue side, there is a line item, miscellaneous revenue, a large chunk of which we earmark for basically unanticipated revenue that might come to the school board as opportunities during the course of the school year. For example, the PBIS state grant that we received that mid-year, we had no idea the first year that that was even coming. But this basically allows a placeholder to receive those funds, and that we can then turn around and spend them. And what this means is that in terms of those unanticipated grants and other revenue sources, we have received some that we weren't expecting, but about, between $150,000 and $200,000 has not been realized. The good news is, on the expense side, because we've built that in as a reserve that we know not to touch unless the funds actually do materialize on the revenue side, it's not that we're outspending money that we haven't collected yet. And that, and that is showing on the spending side under the other transfers and reserves, the 182 that we do not anticipate spending, because we simply haven't collected the money. You know, to be honest, between now and the end of the year, you know, there may be some wonderful grant or some opportunity that may avail itself of us, and this will give us the ability to take advantage of that quickly. So, those two things sort of cancel each other out. Also, on the spending side, you know, two big items. One, the health insurance rate increase that is upcoming, not only affects next year, FY '17, it also impacts FY '16 to some degree, to about the tune of between, I would, I would say about $70,000, because the health insurance premiums, because they're paid, collected and paid a month in advance, they actually begin being collected at the new rate in June. And for our 10-month staff, that is, the staff who work between September and June, they're paid between September and August. So, the health insurance premiums for them that would continue that they have, that they have earned this year, that we will pay in this upcoming July and August, will also be at the higher rate. So, that will impact the FY '16 budget. So, that's a big impact. And then, also, I had mentioned the fact about the bus cameras, and that's an expense that we had anticipated realizing, that that will not, not occur this year. It is budgeted next year. We did budget both the revenue and the expenditures for the bus cameras next year, so wish we would be able to take care of that. Ultimately, what, you know, what this means, and I think you can, it depends on how you look at it, it's either a good thing or a bad thing. I tend to look at it as a good thing. The amount of fund balance and carryforward that the school board has, and has, over the last couple of years, plugged in to its budgets during, during the budget development season, has been dropping steadily. This year, we had plugged in $650,000 of the fund balance to use as carryforward, and we got that number from the, from the audit report. Next year, from the same audit report that we received in the November, December timeframe, we know that we have approximately $460,000 to plug in to the FY '17, next year's budget, to help support the operating budget there. What this means, though, is that instead of the $460,000 in FY '18, year after next, at this point, we're anticipating about $120,000. So, again, that's a, you know, that's a revenue item that is decreasing over time. Basically, what it means is, we're budgeting more tightly, we're projecting expenses more accurately, we're, you know, we're, and revenue more accurately, and not, and there haven't been anything like these VRS holidays, which have provided large windfalls, you know, to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars. But what this does mean is, once again, the fund balance is, we're anticipating it's going to continue that downward trend. Anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kimball? Mr. Redinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several, Mr. Kimball. One is the, first off, I think it's worth noting, and thank you for calling this out, that the school bus cameras basically will pay for about a teacher a year. And so, we lost a teacher due to the legal rulings before, and thanks to the efforts of people like Ms. Meester and Ms. Oppenheimer, we're going to get something back next year. And that's my personal thanks to all of the people, both on the school side and the city side, and the parents that worked on that. The second question is, the figures on spending and revenue show variance from budget. Is that variance from a straight-line forecast on budget, or do you forecast based on expected actual revenue and spending?
Forecast on actual revenue, spend, and spending. In terms of, you know, the revenue side, at this point, because this is as of March 31, our final state revenue is determined by the March 31 average daily membership, which we have sent down to Richmond. So, we know the number, so I can take that number, plug it into the state funding formula, which they have very kindly provided, to show us what we could actually expect to get in terms of state revenue. You know, hence, and we're up very slightly, but we're, but we're still above what we've budgeted here in terms of the state revenue, based on the average daily membership. At the city transfer, the city, for the most part, has been, has been good for the money they've promised us. So, you know, so we can anticipate that. On the spending side, 85% of our, of our budget is salaries and benefits. And because our teachers are, and actually support staff are under, you know, are under the contracts, PARs, we know, we can project the payrolls out. We know what the anticipated benefit rates are, can plug those in, go back and look at historic time card spending in the last quarter of the year, those sorts of things. So, it really, it really is, there is some science to it, it's just not a straight-line number.
No, I appreciate that, but the summary is that you do an actual forecast.
Yes, yes. Oh, yes, sir.
That's what I want to know.
But, you know, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to brag on myself.
I am, I am very impressed. The other question I've got is, is it possible, not so much on the revenue side, but the spending side, to get a one level down from this, you know, regular report? And the reason I ask is, you know, now having much, being much more familiar with the budget, having gone through the line items, I'd be interested in preparing for the next budget cycle, to watch execution against budget on something like the line item budget level of detail.
Okay.
And so, I don't know that most people would be interested in that, but I'd like to be able to do that. And I'm sure those figures are available, so if it could be provided, that would be helpful.
I think, we can talk, but I think, I think I have, I know what I'd like to see if I were you. So, okay.
Thank you.
I think it's very doable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Lawrence.
Question for Tony.
Question for Tony. The school bus cameras, they were still running this year, weren't they?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And I know I raised this with Lila at the legislative breakfast, but any chance we can go back and issue tickets for the time when we were suspended, since we're now allowed to issue tickets?
That's probably a Mr. Horn question, but I can't imagine that we could do that since it was, since it was against the law during that time period.
Well, but it was only temporarily against the law. I mean, I'm just, anything I can do to get money.
Mr. Horn, as you answer this question, maybe you can explain exactly what the problem was.
Yeah, I will. I'd like to clarify that at no point were bus cameras or issuing tickets as a result of being caught on a bus camera ruled illegal in the state of Virginia. What happened was the Attorney General issued an opinion that the statute that governed the issuance of citations for passing a school bus caught on camera did not allow for the service of those tickets via regular mail. And that is the process that our division and every other division using ATS was employing to issue the citations. So it was simply a method of service that was deemed not appropriate by the Attorney General, so we pulled back on the issuing of the citations during that period, but the cameras did continue to run, but the statute would not allow a retroactive violation. So if the police department did not process it as a citation under a different code statute, we will not be processing it under this statute come July 1. Worth a shot. It was.
Mr. Chairman, Tom, could you just explain that a little bit more? I mean, what's this, what's the, what is the statute that prohibits? Because it is a violation.
It is a violation.
And it's just a procedural rule that you can't serve it.
Yeah.
So there's another rule that you have to process.
And we'll bring, what we can do, we can bring this statute as it's going to go into play in July to the board next time, but it's going to give you a 10-day limit, a 10-day window to process that citation from the date of event.
Understood. Thank you. You bet.
Well, my understanding is service had to be done in person, correct?
Yeah, and that, which is unlike the statute that applies to red light cameras, the red light camera specifically provides for service by mail. When the General Assembly passed the bus camera legislation the first time, they simply omitted that by-mail language.
Which is costly, and if a violator lives in an outlawing jurisdiction, it's, you could do it, but it's not economical, is that?
You just can't drive over to their house and drop it off at the front.
Yeah. And we did explore those options with both our local police department and neighboring jurisdictions, but then you run into some constitutional issues unless you can serve them to everyone, and the further away the violator is, the more difficult it would be to work out agreements with those jurisdictions to serve citations.
Thank you. Other questions? So I have a question, Mr. Kimball. So does this $122,000 flow into the fund balance? Well, I mean, depending on if it's still there at the end of the fiscal year, right? I mean, we have, we have some time to go.
It would. What it would do is, at this point, with the audit report we received last fall, there was, you know, a certain number, I think it was about 1.1, 1.2 million dollars, of which 650 was then earmarked to fund this year, the balance of which we knew we have in the bank, and that we can use to fund FY17, our upcoming year. This would mean that this 122 would be above that 460 that we were, are planning on using to fund FY17, so it would actually increase, it would flow into fund balance, but it's the fund balance that we're now drawing down to fund school operations.
Right. Before this, the next projected fund balance was, what, was it the 100 and change, right? Wasn't it 180 or something? So would this make it around 300 then?
This would, this would make it around 580, 600.
Okay.
Yeah. From which you would take the 460 for next year, and then that would leave the 120 for FY18.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Charpentier? No? Okay. One other question on capital. I was, I don't know whether it was the town hall or last night at the city council meeting, there's some general government IT spending that's capitalized. I know every year we have a discussion of what's capital and what's not, and is there a way that we can capitalize some of our IT spending the way general government can and does?
Well, the capitalization, I mean, it's a, capital is a category, which is above, you know, we are buying a single item above a certain dollar threshold for the purposes of, you know, keeping a fixed asset inventory. We're currently using the number $5,000, the same number that, you know, that the city.
General government.
The general government is using, so we're in lockstep there. In terms of debt-funded capital, the school board does not have the authority to issue debt. The city council does have that authority. And when I first started this job about a million years ago, for example, what we referred to as rolling stocks, trucks, buses, fire engines, things like that, were actually in the capital budget. And then in the late 90s, it was, well, what are these doing, you know, in the capital budget? These are ongoing, you know, operating expenses. You're going to need a bus, you're going to need to replace the bus, it really belongs in the operating fund, and we moved the vehicles back into the operating fund. And so, in terms of equipment, whether it's buses, or computers, or refrigerators, or ovens, or things like that, they have been purchased from the, on a pay-as-you-go basis in the operating budget. Dr. Jones and I actually today were discussing the possibility of lease purchasing some items, for example, buses, which is, which would be another strategy that would, could possibly lower the annual expense, but then it's an obliga, a multi-year obligation.
That's the next Tuesday discussion.
Okay.
It wouldn't be budget season without a discussion of capital and what's not, so.
Got to talk about buses.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Now we come to item 4.10, the construction update. Dr. Jones?
On the construction update, really the only thing I have is, of course, we're still moving forward on Mount Daniel. We expect that submission to be in this week. Once the submission is in, then we know that that document is, you know, will be public on Fairfax County's side as well, and we will have a community forum between now and when our data is set, trying to answer some of those questions, and, you know, we'll invite Mr. Shields, and I thought he did a great job talking about the finance side at the GM MEH forum when the question was asked, so we'll invite him to attend as well to talk about the financing and bond side, and then I can talk about any changes that have been made to the actual facility on this submission.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Any questions? Mr. Reddy?
Not a question, but just a comment. I think the decision to go forward and have a public forum to answer the public's questions on Mount Daniel is a very important thing, and my thanks to the superintendent for moving forward on that as soon as it's possible to do so. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? And the only other thing I would add there is that, given that there has been the passage of time, I think the more information and updates we can provide, the better, because I think it is, it is sometimes frustrating the pace at which we're operating, so any updates are always welcome. Next, item 4.11, GM MEH project projection.
I put this on the board docs tonight more than anything. The very first one that says GM MEH projected projections, because this is a question that came up at both of the GM MEH evening town halls that we did, and then city council had a question on it, and if any of the members of the school board want a bigger copy, I did bring a bigger one, if you want one. But I think it's important that you understand what's on it, because Mr. Kimball and I, over the last couple of years, have done long-range projections. We've tried to look at low, middle, and high, and we always get the question about how development is going to impact school enrollment. And on this chart, what you're looking at, I want to point out a couple of things, and actually, since I, since we gave it to city council, based on a couple of questions they had that weren't, I could tell they weren't clear, we went back, and Mr. Kimball and I made a few tweaks just to even make it a little bit better. So this is the projected number of student seats that we would need by school building and location through 2930, 202930. When you look on the far left-hand side, you can see where we are right now, and that is, I have a couple of copies, if somebody in the audience, if you guys, anybody want one? Mr. Kimball, do you mind? This time of the year, I carry all these in my bag, so. So when you look at this projection, what you're seeing on that 2016, 2017, and this question was, this question was asked at council last night, what's in our budget for FY17 in terms of student enrollment? And if you will look at 2016, 2017, the number you see, that 2595, there is no projected enrollment that's in our budget for FY17, coming from the developments, yet we know they're going to be staggering and opening, and one of them has already started opening by floor. So we've gone very conservative this year. We show in 1718, if you look down in the bottom where it says approved, these three developments are all approved. So the low projection is that 36 on West Broad, also called Rushmark, the high is 81. Now, if all of the, if we get a high projection next year, and we really get 81 students from that development, it will have a huge impact on us next year, because we have not budgeted for that high number, and even with the low number. If those 30-odd children happen to all be Mount Daniel and second and third grade, we're going to fill that number. Then in 201819, you'll see the next two projections, which are 36, sorry, excuse me, 25 and 45, because it's a smaller development, and it has, when I say smaller, it has to do with even the bedroom count. So these are real projections, working with city staff on the fiscal impact model, and that also will be opening in the fall. So again, you've got another 25 or 45 children that throughout next school year, because it can often roll in during the year, we could in fact have more than 100 children, we could have very few, and it may take two or three years. Again, we just don't know. So those two developments, West Broad, Rushmark, Tanner Hill-Lincoln, are not, I'm going to say that again, not in the FY17 budget. So it's going to be real important that we watch those. Then when you look at Mason Row, Mason Row may or may not, 201920, maybe too aggressive, I don't know what they're, that as they move through the planning commission and all of those areas, that, all those boxes they have to check, but again, when Mason Row comes on, it's 63 and 105. And again, the city plans fiscally, they know the revenue they're supposed to get from these developments, and make sure that the number of students we're getting, that the revenue off of the building pays for the students. However, when September comes, unless we go back to city council, if all of these children, these 81 children, if they really did show up in September, October, then we would need to make some adjustment or have huge class sizes probably somewhere. So I think we just, I want everybody to be eyes wide open. And then the other question that we get, what are the future, when we look at future development? And this is what came up at the GM MEH discussion, well, how do you plan for what's going to happen in the future? And honestly, if we knew what was going to really, really happen in 20 years, it would be fantastic, but what we do is use all of the data points that we have that we know are valid, and the first thing is Weldon Cooper, which is your natural growth, who does that for us out of the UVA Center. So when you look on the bottom, this is an assumption that Washington and Broad actually goes forward, that's the Appleby property, and what Hunter and I decided to do, when you look at the number that's plugged in, we just assumed it's going to be another Mason Row, numbers-wise. So let's say it was a smaller development like Tanner Hill, that would lower the number. So if you just want to know, how do you even know on a development that hasn't come forward, it's emulating Mason Row? Then if there are two more projects, it could be, it says new campus project, because if it was on GM campus, but this could be anywhere in the city. So this is assuming three future developments, anywhere in the city. These are the numbers that you would get. And so as you go out to 2930, you're looking at the low, and you're looking at the high, and again, if you look at the Weldon Cooper chart, you can actually see just natural growth, but this is a big question we get in town, and so I wanted the school board to see this, because it's rare that city council sees something before the school board, but because we had a question from them on the budget that dealt with this, Hunter and I wanted to give a visual, because it's so hard to explain just in words, so I wanted to be sure the school board had it in front of you. And then there are two more items on here, and these are just for your reference, these were added late today as we've continued to provide information for you, and this is showing you the breakdown for how you get to 112 million. So it's, again, information for you, and our Catus works on this information for us, and they have, since our project was first in the CIP, I want to say it's back in 2012, 13. And then beside that, the other question that we've had from a few community members over this past weekend, is just looking at the RFP, and it was looking at the conceptual RFP, and how that's changed on the detailed RFP that's in draft right now, and you can look at the number of classrooms and that sort of thing, and what those changes are. And I will tell you, I'm working on another chart right now, it's just, I'm not finished with it, but that goes through and looks at how many English classrooms do we have right now at Mason? How many English teachers do we have? And how does that compare to what we're actually planning for? And so when we get that, I think that will be good information, because that's something that people have asked for as well. Let's just take a little bit of time to do all that.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Welcome.
Any questions? Mr. Reddy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. A couple of points slash questions on the budget chart. I think I know the answers to these, but I'd like to confirm.
I'm sorry, which one? I'm sorry, is it this big one?
Sorry, the projected number of students, not the, not the
Okay.
School cost one. For the low and the high, what's the difference in selecting ratios in determining what the projected students out of each development are?
How do you get the low and the high?
Yes.
It's all based on, and actually, I wish the city was here, because they would answer this much better than I, because I send them all of our data, they work with Tischler-Bice, who actually uses them, a model, they have a model where they run, where they run the numbers. They're looking at the number, and it kind of goes back to that property chart, the number of students who come from one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms, and then they take that, and they look at all of the different developments in the city, and what our actual enrollment has been from all those developments, and that's how, and truthfully, we don't always agree, and so when we first started doing this a few years ago, it was finding, is it the low, or is it the high, and then having to work through those numbers. So they're actuals, they're actually based on our students that are coming from developments in the city right now, and then how many of those drilling down to the bedroom count? So how many one bedrooms are in a building, how many two bedrooms or three bedrooms? Because that drives the number of students.
So, thank you, Dr. Jones. Understood, but I assume, since the numbers are different, that they pick different ratios based on what they've seen historically in the past, so that?
The different developments?
Yeah, so for example, the low,
Yes.
The low is probably driven more by Northgate, and the high more by Pearson Square.
It's actually, it's even, I want to say, they, yeah, it's the type of unit, and so when you look, and the number, and the number of units. So they really, when you look at, I want to say Tanner Hill, I think it has a lot of one bedrooms in it, where, the best example is if you look like a Pearson Square, which isn't on here, but that one has a lot of the bigger units, so you get families and children. But that's why the numbers are different, it's based on the actual units in the building, and what that building is producing in development, and how many units there are.
Sorry, that wasn't the question I was trying to ask.
Sorry.
I apologize for my imprecision. What I was trying to ask is that, for a given breakdown of units in any one development, there's a difference between the low projection and the high projection, and the difference is based on historically what we've seen, so that some developments, such as Pearson Square, produced more projected students for the same type of unit than did, say, Northgate. And is that what led to the difference between nor, low and high projections for the same building?
Actually, God, I wish they were here, because they could answer this better than me. It really isn't the same type of unit getting different numbers. So when you look at the one bedrooms at Northgate, it's not radically different than the one bedrooms at Pearson, because it's just that Pearson doesn't have a lot of one bedrooms. Northgate has a lot of smaller, and also square footage, units. Back when Pearson was built, we weren't doing any of this, and so they didn't have the information when they were building the building, and it was also supposed to be a condo, which the numbers are very different at condos than their apartments, but I would have to ask them, what is, and Hunter, do you know the, like, what he's asking, I think, is the delta between the 36 and the 81? So with their, with their model that the city is using, do you know how they get from low to high? It's the type of units, and it's the average, right?
I believe so. I do know that ultimately-
I believe so. I do know that ultimately where we came out with, with the low, middle, and the high, is that the low actually was the model that the city was using. The high was actually what we were, we were experiencing when we went out to go test, test the buildings and, you know, and, you know, went in unit, unit by unit to see the generation rates. And, and then
We used to have to do it by hand.
And then we just split the difference to come up with, with a mid-range.
The question, though, and I, I thought I knew the answer. Apparently, I didn't. I would like to know what the difference between assumptions between low and high for the same building are. So if they're, and I don't need to do a lot of detail, but I'd just like to understand what the modeling differences are that led to the low and the high, because it actually makes a reasonable amount of difference in terms of future projections. The other thing I just wanted, I have spent some time with this, and I'd like to say what my understanding of the chart is for everyone's, you know, edification, and then just, someone could tell me if this is wrong. That the way these figures are calculated is that there is, the Weldon Cooper numbers are added to the sum of the new, either approved or future developments. And then the, you know, whether low or high, so there's a column that is not present, not seeable here, that includes the Weldon Cooper numbers. And then you add the projected development numbers to the Weldon Cooper numbers to give you the low and the high. And that, actually, that's just it. Sorry.
That's correct.
And then I have a request, which is, it would be very interesting to, you know, keep this in an archive and look in future years.
See how it plays out.
Yes. Where we, where we used, or where we met or did not meet the projections.
And I think that's one of the reasons, too, that for, we think it's really important that we're doing this, because we don't know what we don't know. And I think we, we've said that for a couple of years. We're so tiny, and we don't have a lot of new development that are apartment-driven. We do with condos, I feel like have some pretty good, you know, numbers. But we just don't, we don't know what's going to happen this next school year. It's a little scary next school year, having two large developments open in the middle of the year.
The world.
Yeah. Over the next three years, because they build over time.
Just, my, my understanding before was that the low figure actually used the detailed projections in the city's model, and the high just used an average, you know, number of kids per, it was, it was a more simple calculation. But I, if we could get to ground on that, it'll be helpful.
Yeah. And I will say, originally, when we first started, because we've been doing this for four years, probably, the first year, ours was more accurate. Theirs was too low, and it made us nervous that we were under projecting. So I know that's when they sought, I think, outside help, too. And so did we.
Other questions? A couple of questions, Dr. Jones. The first is, where are we at kindergarten enrollment right now?
As of last week, we were at 146, which is a little scary. But I'm just, I'm really hopeful that we're just, have a lot of single-family homes with little bitty ones, and they already live here. But generally, we would be 80 or 90 students, and then it would double. And I, Hunter or I, neither one thinks it's going to double this year. But this will be the very, very first year we've ever seen this happen. So will it be a class of 200? I can't imagine that we wouldn't continue to grow in the summer, simply because we usually double from pre-enrollment. But maybe just all these little kiddos, you see a lot of them at the park. Maybe they're all already living here.
The other question is empirically, with some of the new development, you look, for example, on the approved, and obviously, you can't tell the future. So it's, it seems as if there are some marker numbers that are just inserted there. For example, Rushmark is 36 and 81. In our experience, do numbers rise and fall within a particular building? Or do they tend to trend up? Or is it a little, or is there just no pattern at all?
Well, that's a hard question, too, because it depends which developments. We're trying to watch old and new. If you look at Pearson, it's growing a little bit each year. Northgate, the first year, was exactly on target. The next year, it grew only four or five kids. But the projection's real low from that building. So they are all, I mean, enrollment growth is coming from everywhere, literally everywhere. So they are continuing to grow. If you look at Oakwoods numbers, you know, on the, on that chart that has all the housing, single-family homes are growing. As a matter of fact, I was working on another data sheet today with the city, where Jim Snyder wants to drill down farther and look at all of the homes that don't have children in them, that are, where they know the value of the home could be sold and a new house could go up, and the value would be much better to the person who lives there, to do that, because that's all those knock-down rebuilds that we're seeing in the city, trying to get an idea on how many single-family homes could also be turning over that are in the whole, the entire, I don't know, single-family home crop that we have. So, does that answer that?
Yes. And I, just going through town today, the answer is there are a lot of such buildings.
Yeah.
And they are being taken down, and they are being rebuilt.
Well, I know over the last, and I, off the top of my head, I can't remember if it's 15 years, 20 years, but, you know, we've added almost 200 single-family homes just to the city that were not here, additional homes. So, you know, those knocked down, where you build two. If you, if you actually go up to Mount Daniel right now, that corner is fascinating to me. It used to have like two or three houses, and now it has five in the last, the school year. So, and that does have an impact, just adding more housing stock.
And in terms of, are we seeing, there's the turnover in old construction and new construction, again, within particular class? Is the average family size increasing within single-family homes, do we know?
Hunter, that, that ratio's going up as well in single-family home, right? Is it, we'd have to go back and look? I want to say yes, but we have to go back and look at the chart.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The next issue on the agenda is 4.12, the health insurance status update.
And this really is just letting the school board know where we are as of this week. You know, we have reached out to the city, and they are going to use part of the, what they were going to utilize as capital, to take care of the issue on their side, which will not have an impact to their operating budget. We are not in that situation. And so as of right now, there is no solution, we've been told from the city, to help the schools kind of resolve this issue. So it is anticipated that next week, we need to look at our budget and find that $245,000 in cuts. And Hunter and I have continued to work on that over the last week or two, was it, wherever our last meeting was, where we talked about that. And we do have a different solution, we think might be more palatable. Again, we're just, we're trying to look at, turn every little stone over and see how we can do it to have the least pain. But what I can say is if we have to go below 245,000, and we're back the next week, if city council does in fact cut the school budget, it will be incredibly difficult. And when you go in and you look at, you know we have to add the special education teachers, you know, that's not an option. And the class-sized teachers, that we are adding these three teachers, we need a first-grade teacher at Mount Daniel. They would start the year right now at 23. And again, this is where these numbers are now. Thomas Jefferson in third grade next year would start with 29 in a class. And in fifth grade, they would have 26 or 27. So those are big class sizes for us, if we have to cut any sort of teaching positions. And I think, again, I think Amanda alluded to this, our staff do not want to see the salary, us have to make a reduction in our 2% across the board that we're doing for everybody, because many of them are going to be impacted also by the health insurance issue. So, so that's where we are. And we are going out to all school sites tomorrow. Mr. Kimball and I will be doing those, except for one that they wanted the same time, just to be there for staff that could have questions. And over the last week or two, we've sent out, I did send out just the new health insurance rates that have all the part-time, full-time rates. And so they could know what, what it's going to cost next year. And then we also knew that anticipating, some of them may want to explore Kaiser, and is that more, because it's more cost-effective, but is, does it do what they need it to do? So we sent out all the information for Kaiser, so they could make thoughtful choices if they did want to switch insurance. So we're just going out tomorrow to field questions and see if we can be of assistance to anybody.
Ms. Ward.
I just wanted to clarify, we couldn't submit a revised budget based on that incorrect information we were given about the insurance rates. Are we, are we obligated to cut these positions? Are we obligated to, to cut our budget further?
The way that I would answer that is, I'm going by what the school board gave us direction to do at the last meeting. And the school board did not feel that we were in a position to go and ask just for a general increase in the operating budget of 245,000. But if the school board should change their mind, Hunter and I certainly could do that.
Yeah. It was our understanding that Dr. Jones and administration, other members of the administration, you know, work with the city to see if a joint solution could be identified. And as Dr. Jones mentioned, you know, the city has found a solution that, that works for them. But, you know, in terms of, of meeting, you know, the deficit in our budget, there's not a joint solution.
We don't have that same resource.
We, we do not, unfortunately.
And we have a bigger tab to pay as well, more than two times what general government has on the health insurance side. Other questions or comments? All right. We'll move on to item 4.13 regarding the George Mason MEH RFP and the request for detailed proposal process. As you all may know, last night, the city council voted to defer consideration of these RFPs with an eye to scheduling a meeting with the school board to have a discussion of the exact language of a request for detailed proposals, because there have been drafts going back between the bodies, and there are some issues that city council felt, and I would agree, that are best dealt with by communications with the two bodies in an effort to try to work these, these sticking points out. So, so with that in mind, I'm not sure that the action item listed here is ripe. But Dr. Jones, if you want to have a discussion about where we stand in the process, perhaps you can request, you can discuss as well, the sizing in the population of the high school, so that there's clarity as to where these numbers have come, come about, and what a 1,500-student school is versus a 1,200.
Can you please talk into your mind, please?
Thought I was. My apologies.
Having trouble hearing you.
Thank you. And my understanding is, this is a discussion item tonight. But what you see on here is the draft RFP that we know still needs some work, simply because city council and school board are not, haven't really had a chance to actually talk about it together. And what you'll find on here is the school program. And we do have Bob Jones from Arcadis here, if you have, you know, a specific question. Most of this, I think, for the school board is pretty self-explanatory, in that when you look at what's inside the program, it says what the space is, how big the square feet are, and how many of those. The biggest change between the conceptual RFP and the detailed RFP was the, when you look at the square feet and then the classroom counts of all those, like, program spaces. Some of the, the pieces that I think, trying to clarify going forward, and again, it goes back to the chart I was talking about today, is looking at where you have an auditorium that seats 500. In the new school, it would be 750. Originally, that was sitting at 1,500. But high schools actually generally don't, they're all around, anywhere from 550 to 750. We kind of were thinking it'd be nice community-wise to have 1,500, but it just, it's not really feasible. And then the, the classroom counts are really looking at, how many classrooms do you need in order to have a 1,200 high school maximum of 1,500? And, you know, I've tried, and I don't think I've done a very good job the last few weeks, but the questions that I have at the community forums have helped me understand that people weren't understanding how capacity works at a building. And if you look at George Mason, we have had 900 or students there. We don't have that many students now. The way we were using that building with 900 students looked very different than the way we're using it now. And when you look at where we are and where in this detailed RFP we sit, I truly believe we cannot go any smaller. When you go back and you look at projections, even if it's just Weldon Cooper. And I think when you see the number of teachers we have now, and you see the, what we're planning for, and I get that in front of you, it'll even help over the next week or two. Because when you look at that, you know, there's already nine teachers, and you're building 11 spaces. So if you cut back to nine spaces, that's today. That doesn't count next year. And all this growth we've talked about, you're talking about changing the model and making, and asking our teachers to open a building and have a totally different style of teaching. And I can tell you at our high school, that would not go over well. It's, it's different when you're in a building and you open it, and you have some years to grow. And everybody is understanding if we get a bazillion kiddos from somewhere we didn't expect, and then you have to start sharing space. And the model changes with you over time. They are not understanding, if you open a high school and you say, oh, by the way, we have a beautiful new building, but you're not going to have your own room, you're going to have to share with somebody else, and you're going to have to be a traveling teacher, but this is a teacher that's always had their own room. So that's kind of what you're seeing reflected in here, is we have pared everything down to where we think it needs to be for the growth and what projections show over time, and providing what the community has asked us to provide, a new auditorium, they want a second turf field for children to, competition field, which we don't have. They want a gym in our high school that is a high school gym, which is important to high school culture, where it can seat your high school students for pep assemblies and, you know, other events that students want to have. And a 21st century high school that the teachers get to weigh in on, they get to talk about how they, they don't want to be stuck in a little bitty box. They would like to have collaboration spaces and things of that nature. So all of that is built into here, and that's where the numbers come from. So I don't know if that answers that. Mr. Castillo, enough?
Yes, thank you. Questions, comments? Mr. Redding?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not actually a question or a comment, but a motion. I'd like to move that the school board discontinue the current PPEA process by deciding not to issue a request for detailed proposals.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion of the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think the idea of 24 hours after the council said, we'd like to talk some more, suddenly killing it is not only premature, but rash. So I don't support this at all.
Other comments?
I have a question. I, I just want a clarification as to if we ended this process at this juncture, where, what is the benefit of that? And what is the benefit of going forward? Like, I'd like to see both sides of this, because I'm not quite understanding what the benefit is to stop the process at this point. We've come so far. So if you could just explain that, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Redding?
Absolutely. I oppose and have opposed proceeding to phase two of the RFP. First reason is cost. With only two bidders, I think that the city, schools, and general government lack leverage to get the best deal and the best school. With only two bidders, we cannot expect to have much competition on school construction costs, nor will the options presented for development be as broad as more competition might achieve. Second is options. With one process involving both schools and development, I also think we will have less ability to control the details of either, because a larger set of choices will be rolled together in choosing proposer A versus proposer B. In short, we can't pick the best school and the best development, because we will have to pick both together. A joint PPEA process also appears inherently more private and less public than the process should be. The calls we are receiving for more public participation can be better met in a decoupled process. Third, on Mount Daniel, I also remain concerned that with Mount Daniel still undecided, we will face more resistance to a new bond issue, and we may be alienating land that we need for future school expansion. And of course, with only two bidders, there's a real risk that one or more both might drop out, reducing the city's ability to get what it wants from the school or development, and perhaps ending the process entirely with further delay. I think we're not without options. My suggestion is the following. First, proceed with a smaller school program. The new high school could be built smaller and with reduced features, but built with the plan to expand and enhance once the MEH debt comes off the the plan to expand and enhance once the MEH debt comes off the city's balance sheet. My understanding is that an $80 million school could be built with 8.5 cents on the tax rate. That amount could be reduced even further by building a capital reserve, selling land for development, or other means. The smaller school program could be a design and then build process or a new school-only PPEA process. Second, start now with an inclusive process with the city council, planning commission, and the public to propose a new school facilities plan if the Mount Daniel plan is not approved by Fairfax County. How do we get the land for a new elementary school if the Mount Daniel site isn't viable in the long term? Third, start a process to consider sale of up to 10 acres of land on which George Mason currently sits. For example, the council planning commission schools group could look again at the sale or development of property but not limited to two proposals and not held hostage to the need to get money to build a school. The group could also look at whether any sale could be accompanied by a land exchange to obtain additional land for schools or parks that presents less commercial development opportunity. Fourth, once the Mary Ellen Henderson debt comes off the city's book around 2026, plan to expand and enhance the size of high school. It's been my view for some time that we should end this PPA process. I hold that view based on the number of bidders, and while I will not discuss the specifics of either proposal, nothing in them changes my mind. Continuing down this process continues to cost money and waste time that could be used to build a new high school sooner and cheaper. Of course, I could be wrong. It may be that this process will result in a good deal for the city, giving it a great school at a reasonable price and the development it wants. If so, I will be very happy. But hope is not a strategy, and that outcome seems unlikely to me. Therefore, I do not support continuing with the detailed request for proposals. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please, please refrain from expressions during our meeting. Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I did not have time to prepare remarks today. One of my children used the sick room at school, so that took up my time. But I have opposed going forward with the detailed RFP as well. I think I've been consistent in that, so I know this doesn't come as a surprise to the rest of the board, for the public. I think it's important to realize that there are three people who have spoken out against continuing this process, and all three of us have children who will go to the school. All three of us, including council member Hardy, will be here paying for the school, and all three of us have opposed going forward with the detailed RFP. This is not because I don't care about having a new school, I care deeply about it. I don't think that this is the right way to go about it. I think the process is too closed. I don't think that with two bids, we are getting the best high school we can get for our money. And I would like to see the public more involved in learning more about the trade-offs, some things that we've removed from the program, such as an indoor pool that I know the community as a whole would really like to see. And I'd like to see us discuss that more. What does it cost to include a pool? And what are you willing to trade off to get that pool or any other feature? I think more time is warranted to discuss that, but I don't think that the detailed RFP is going to get us there. I think it will cost more money and not end up with a good result for our city. Thank you.
Other questions, other questions or comments? Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For me, I will say that some, I, some of the concerns that they, that Ms. Gill and Mr. Redinger have brought up, I am more and more starting to have some of those same concerns, in particular on the Mount Daniel side, that I think as long as that is an open-ended process that I recognize it is coming to an end, I think it's going to be very hard for, for me to ask the community to, to go to and vote for a referendum on, again, on that particular, until we have a clear understanding of what's going to happen with that particular project and lay out what's going to be potential next steps if by chance this does not pass. But I will say, I am not at this point being that the council wants to continue to have the conversations. I am open to still doing that, having those conversations, but I will be very attentive to what potential new developments may come up within those, in the conversations that the council is seeking to have and see if we get to a point that may change my opinion. But at this point right now, I lean a little bit more towards Mr. Redinger and Ms. Gill, but I am willing to still give the council and our bodies the opportunity to, to discuss possible features in pro-school programs, the pool that came up last evening, you know, to at least have those conversations. And I think we still need to have those conversations because it is very important that every day that we, we wait, we do, George Mason is starting to become more and more of a, a money pit. I recognize that. I reckon, I totally recognize that, which makes it very difficult for me to, to have the reservations that I do because I recognize where we are. But I want to make sure that we are putting forward the best proposal that we can, particularly when we're going to be going back to our citizens in a fairly short amount of time, asking for them to vote again on a referendum that's going to be even larger at this particular time.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Ms. Ward, any, any thoughts? Well, while you think, I don't know what the right solution is. And for that reason, I think we have to take great care before we jettison any of our options to understand frankly what the least bad solution to this problem may be. Each avenue has its costs and its benefits, but there is no magic solution here. There will not be a new high school without sacrifices, sacrifices of land potentially, sacrifices of tax rate, sacrifices of time. And my concern is that precipitously cutting short this process leaves us with that many fewer options, and we don't have many to start with. I would much rather exhaust this process. It may well be that there is no viable way to move forward under this process, but we don't know that yet. And I think it would be hasty to throw it overboard at this, at this time. Is it a large undertaking? Absolutely. Is it complicated? Yes. Does it have trade-offs with respect to time, land, and money? I think we have the responsibility as a body working with our colleagues on city council to work very diligently to make sure that whatever we do, we do so carefully and with full knowledge of the facts. And I would remind everyone, we are at the end of a request for conceptual proposals. To call it a sketch on a napkin doesn't do it justice, but from an architectural and planning standpoint, that's where we are. We don't know the details of the financing, we don't know the details of the development, we don't know the details of the proposed school building because we haven't seen it yet, because we haven't asked for it yet. If we don't ask for it, we won't know. And should we consider options that are alternatives as we go through this process? Absolutely. But again, if we were to simply cut this short now, we would have fewer options. And frankly, the path forward would be, you can call it decoupling, but the, the plain English term for it is going at it alone and asking the citizens for a massive burdensome tax increase with the hope potentially of some subsequent development, pressure relief down the road. And that's a big ask, and I think we need stewards of our city's resources as well as stewards of the educational future of our children. We owe it to them to be careful and deliberate as opposed to hasty and irresponsible. So for that reason, I oppose this, and while I have no illusions about the outcome of this process, we should proceed. And I don't think we should proceed because we've spent a lot of time doing this, but Lord knows we have. But, but we need to know the answer to some key questions, and there were, there were issues last night, someone on council said we need detailed financial planning and information. Well, we can't do that because we don't know what the financing proposal would be because we aren't at that stage of the process. And so until we get there, I think we owe it to the citizens and the children and the teachers and staff of Falls Church and the Falls Church City Public Schools to keep all of our options open. Is that enough time for you to think up something, Ms. Ward, or you?
I stopped thinking, you know, after eight, after nine o'clock. So I, I had thought about this as well, and really, I was thinking along your lines, Mr. Chair. I, I feel like we have already invested a lot of time and money and agony to get this far. I really hate the idea of cutting it off at this point. We're not committed if we follow through, correct? We are just finding out what our options are, yes?
That is correct.
Okay. So I don't see the harm in at least, you know, taking this to, to its end so we can see what is available to us. I, I just think it's foolish to stop at this point. And like I said, as long as we're not committed, once we get our options, then we have something, we have, we have a vantage point at that, at that juncture. We have one or two proposals or one or two, two options that we could work from. We could accept it or reject it. But at this point, we are in the final, what, the final lap of this, so I think we really should just finish the race and then go from there.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Mr. Charpentier, do you wish to weigh in in this matter? I won't hold it against you if you don't.
Well, I'll say a few things. Well, you started this process way before I came on, and so, and so for the whole period that I was here, I've been to a few community meetings, and I've seen you open to input from the students as well. From my standpoint, I don't understand the finances as well as you all probably do, but it's come up in my mind, like, the why is it that we're tying these two together? And I guess that the argument for that is that one pays for the other. But I, from my humble opinion, I think that it's beneficial to at least see where we're headed or what the, they propose, and it allows us also to compare what make, what, if we refuse, what comes up. It also allows us to compare that to what we might get otherwise. And so, I don't know. I think it's more options than, it would open us to more options to go along with this process than to simply stop right there. My two cents.
Thank you very much. Other, Ms. Gill?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully disagree with you that we do not have enough information. In fact, we have had so much information and many, many hours of meetings in closed session where I think we as a body have a great deal of information about the finances, the details of this project. I know a lot of it is, some of it is, you know, what would go into a particular development that might be there is unclear, but I think it's actually not that unclear. I think it's fairly clear what will be there. I think it's fairly clear what the school will look like. As to, we've already invested time and money in this, I would say, why throw good money after bad? I don't think that this is the right way to go. This is not, this is not a free process to do the detailed RFP. It is not free. We are not just going out there and freely getting some more information. This will cost you money, and I don't think people understand that. And as far as it being hasty, I would strongly disagree with that as well. We have spent hours and hours in closed sessions talking about this, reviewing materials. This is not a hasty decision. I have been in this position that I'm in this evening firmly for quite some time now after receiving much information. So to suggest that this is a hasty decision tonight, I think, is a little bit insulting to myself and Mr. Redinger because it implies that we're up here doing this willy-nilly, and that is certainly not the case. I have not sat in meetings past midnight to make a hasty decision. So I respectfully disagree with your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. Ms. Redinger?
I, I gave my view before, and I won't belabor it. I actually think both positions are reasonable. I don't think it's unreasonable to go forward, and I don't think it's unreasonable to end. There's good reasons to do both. But why I think we ought to end this now, and like I said, I, I've felt that way for some time, is what Ms. Gill was just saying, and that is that this is not, the decision to go forward and not to end the process now is in fact a decision. It is a decision that costs more money, it's a decision that prevents us from fully exploring other options, it's a decision that at least for now prevents us probably from fully coming up with an omnibus plan to address Mount Daniel. And I don't think the chair and those members of the board who agree with that position are wrong. I could be wrong. I just think the more reasonable position is to say that going forward with two bidders in a inherently closed process to some degree, without being able to address Mount Daniel at the same time, strikes me as not the optimal decision. I think we will get a better deal, I think we will get a better school, I think we will get better development if that happens faster and more cheaply if we end the process sooner rather than later. And I would reiterate, I agree with Ms. Gill, this is not a hasty decision. I think the board members know that this has been my consistent view. This is the first opportunity I've had to express it publicly, and I think it's incumbent upon me to express it publicly because that's my view. And I will respectfully abide by the decision of this board. But that is my view. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redinger. Just a point of clarification, both to you and to Ms. Gill. The hastiness is in not having seen what the request for detailed proposals would bring. The lack of finance, while we do have plenty of information, we don't know at this point what the term sheet, if you will, would mean. And so, the, where the rubber hits the road, we're not at that process. And so when I say hasty, I mean exhaustion of the process. I mean finding out, taking this to conclusion. We may, we may well conclude, this dog won't hunt, it's not going to work. And I, I will frankly say that I think the odds are at best even. But Mr. Redinger and I come out, I suppose as with all hard questions, there's not a whole lot of daylight between one conclusion and another, and I think we're potentially in the same place, Ms. Gill, of, in a close question, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a 50-50 proposition. What I do think is important is that we, given, we, there is so much that we don't know, we should make ourselves as, we should decrease our level of ignorance as much as possible. And again, as I said, I don't know that this process will work. I do not believe that this is a winner necessarily, but I think we've got to find out the answer to that question. And so, I apologize if you understood me to say that, that you were acting in a, in a way that was without reason or consideration. When I say hasty, I think it's merely, we have to take this process to some point, and I don't know how far along it will be, to make a conclusion as to what we're going to get. You know, with respect to input and community opinions, I read either late last night or early this morning, discussions of an Olympic-sized swimming pool on this site. And I will assure you that if we have a swimming pool, you're not going to be holding the 2024 Olympics at the George Mason High School Olympic Swimming Pool. I think it's important for the community to understand, we are highly constrained in many ways, and we are working very hard to thread the needle of getting a workable program without bankrupting the city or transforming it in a way that makes it unrecognizable to the people who live here both now and in the future. And that's a tremendously difficult task, and I don't have any illusions that our margin for error And I don't have any illusions that our margin for error is extremely small. And so I think ultimately we need to make haste slowly. We need to not let go of options before we have hold of the other. And I am fully supportive of continuing to make plans for other scenarios as exhaustively as we can. I think that's important, because it will develop alternatives that we may well need, as well as perspectives that will inform the merits of what, if anything, comes out of this process. So again, I value your opinion. I respect our disagreements, and I apologize if I caused you offense in any way.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anything else? I don't think we're going to break City Council's quitting time tonight, but at the rate we're going, maybe a bit longer. Anything else? Recalculating.
Mr. Chair, there's a pending motion in a second.
Yes, would somebody like to call the question?
I don't want to cut off.
All right. Mr. Kimball, would you call the vote?
Certainly, sir.
Might you repeat the motion simply so that we're all?
Okay. Mr. Riding proposed not to issue the detailed RFP as requested and end the joint PPEA process.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, sir. Mr. Castillo?
No.
Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Mr. Riding?
Yes.
Ms. Ward? And Mr. Webb?
No.
The motion fails.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jones. My battery is dead. Now we come to the future agenda items. This is the time where we entertain requests from Board members for future agenda items. Yes.
I just wanted to make one comment on that tonight, that each meeting, we are adding agenda items, and we're up to quite a few that have been added. So I would ask that before we add any more, either let us work through all the ones that have been added, or if you think it's just really critical, I'll, we'll provide a list so we can take something off and push it back to the summer months. But we do have, it's kind of like the survey that took a work session, which was highly valuable, and we got something out of that. But we've got a pretty hefty list right now, so I just remind the School Board of that.
Actually, if you could, at our next meeting, bring us that list, since I'm sure they will all sound familiar, but none of us could write them down.
Absolutely.
Very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Let's start from right to left tonight. Mr. Riding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one topic that I would like to put on the agenda for the future, although I think the summer or the fall is probably sufficient. And that is, the question was raised with the letter again tonight that we've received in the schools, another award that at least on a cursory glance appears to be provided by a for-profit institution. This has been raised before with the Apple Program and the Renaissance Learning piece. I can't say that I know enough about any of those things to come to a definitive conclusion from the start, but I think it is worth us taking a look at the school policy on, we're should say, whether we should have a school policy regarding whether we will accept awards from for-profit institutions that might have a financial stake in giving us the award. I just, again, I would like to have that explored at some point, and that's, I think, enough from me for tonight.
All right. What are your thoughts about that? Would that be something, there's general, there's some interest in the Board on visiting?
I understand the idea. I guess I'm trying to think from my planning commission days, then how do we deal with proffers of developers who are specifically giving proffers to the school for capital projects that they may be bidding on? So I just think, I would like, just like Tom, to sort of look at, are you looking at something that is part of a bigger subset? And we would think we're looking at what we need to by looking at one thing, when in fact, it is part of a bigger subset? That's my only question.
I'm specifically, thank you, Mr. Lawrence, the, I'm specifically looking at the awards piece and not proffers, because, you know, a deal is a deal is a deal, and I think that's fine. What I worry about is that we are unintentionally, for example, by filling out, and I have not had a chance to look at the document that Dr. Jones posted, I admit that, but the, by filling out forms that talk about our use of technology, we are providing essentially market research data to a for-profit company that will be, they will sell. And, you know, as a result of that, we're getting, you know, a certificate that has little actual value to the schools. And it, I worry that it could be unseemly. We could be disclosing information without adequate recompense. Or, you know, the desire to get those awards could adversely affect our procurement decisions going forward, because we'd like to be, you know, a certified school of some type or other. So I just think it's worth a deeper examination to make sure that our policies reflect what we want to be as a school system.
Other thoughts, expressions? Generally, right now, I was just, do we have a few people to make, to put this on the agenda?
Yeah, I fully support this, and I want to also clarify, and I don't think Mr. Riding has implied this either, that there was ill, that there were any ill intentions behind going, applying for these awards at all. But I think we should maybe step back and reexamine whether or not it's something we want to do as a system.
Okay. I think, I'm sorry, Ms. Ward, go ahead.
I just wanted to reflect what you said, Erin, Ms. Gill. I don't think it can hurt, and I think it might be a wise thing. And like, I'm all about getting information, which is one of the reasons I want to continue with that PPA process. I think having, investigating this and looking into it, I think, is a very wise thing for the Board to do, so I'm definitely on board with that.
I guess my only thought would be if we should make this into a larger question about our relationship with for-profit entities, general sponsorship of things. And I think from a thought leadership standpoint, how do we, what if we perform in a way that represents thought leadership and is noted as such? So I think we, there are a lot of aspects of this that are worth considering, and so I guess if this one goes at the back of the line, we'll be dealing with it in due course. So a good suggestion, Mr. Riding. Anyone else? Ms. Gill, working down from right to left?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Webb? Mr. Lawrence?
On future agenda items?
Yes. Ms. Ward?
I don't have any new, but I want to reiterate the Board's self-evaluation that I'd like to work on this summer. I have to wait till school's out, but I was hoping we could do it in one of the slower summer months, maybe July or August, if we, I don't even know how many meetings we have in August. But I would like to have it in one of the later, later months, not before, not before June.
And I will spare us any future agenda items as well, and move on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Jones. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Charpentier, haste makes waste. Forgive me.
I do have one that's very small and not a huge priority right now, and it is modifying 5.12 for student representatives to the advisory committees. I already made some edits that I guess are circulating a bit, but it should be very minor, and it's just correcting some inconsistencies and just codifying the process that we use so it's not up for interpretation and it's explicitly stated. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. That's an excellent suggestion.
Well, just to say, he did give us that language a while ago, and we were advised by Council while the petition was still going not to change anything in 5.12. So Tony's got that, and hopefully that would be a fairly easy lift.
Thank you very much.
That would have helped me, actually, Mr. Charpentier, because I just had a student approach me to become a member of the ESOL Committee, and I didn't realize that you had the process down. I apologize.
Thank you very much. Now let us go to Board and Student Liaison comments. Mr. Charpentier, do you want to kick off, and we'll go back around the horn the other way tonight?
So I guess, recommendation for your weekend, Thursday through Saturday, I believe, there's the play, the high school play, The Bombardier of Errors. I heard it was very funny and definitely a must. I've started the process for finding my replacement, and by that I mean I've publicized it and published an application for it. And those are going to be due at the end, at the beginning of May, the applications. And one thing we're changing this year is that we're requiring candidates to have at least attended some school board meeting or work session. So yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your efforts to keep this continuity working. I think the student representative has been extremely valuable, and I thank Mr. Lawrence for his initiative in pushing that forward, and I think it's, the process improves every year, so I appreciate that. Ms. Ward?
Okay. First, ESOL. The WIDA testing is complete at all schools. The ed count audit should be available soon, May, the end of May? So the draft, and then June at the School Board. So we look forward to getting that information. Few other things. We have a new committee member, Gabby Santos, just stepped up to be our newest member of the Advisory Board. Gabby, she no longer has students, our kids at FCPS, but she remains an active volunteer in our schools, and we feel very fortunate to have her onboard with the ESOL Committee. And we're also very fortunate that Jeanette Walters has asked to be reappointed, so we're going to get to work on that as well. The ESOL Committee is planning a second community outreach. We're looking forward to that as well. Last year was the kickoff, and we held a community outreach at the park next to the fields, and we had a big turnout, including we had ESOL teachers, staff members, Ms. Seabridge, and the ESOL Committee members, and Ms. Hi were all in attendance, and it was very successful. So we're going to try it again this spring. We are not sure the date or the time or the place yet. Did we decide? Oh, May 25th, wonderful. Did they decide a place yet where they're going to hold it?
Discussion is to have it at one of the schools.
It's still that, that's still, okay.
But we will be receiving the subcommittee's information in the next couple of days, if there were any changes.
All right. So May 25th is the date. We're not sure the location yet. See what else. Oh, one of the things that, I don't know if any of you are aware, that the ESOL Committee does, they make sure that all the families have computers and Wi-Fi in their homes. Recently, Mount Daniel provided five refurbished computers and Wi-Fi to five different families, and actually, one of the families, somebody from staff actually went out and set it up for one of the families. I mean, you don't find this kind of service in big school districts. I think that's pretty cool. That's pretty much it with ESOL Athletic Boosters. Spring sports are underway. We have a bunch of, a bunch of sports this spring, track and field, baseball, softball, boys and girls lacrosse, soccer, and tennis. Come out and watch some of our talented athletes. We've got some really good athletes at this school. Also, if you're interested, the Athletic Boosters are selling vouchers for games. You can get a book of 10 vouchers for $40 and a book of 25 for $95. You may have to become a member of the Athletic Boosters to get those prices. I'm not sure, but you can always check with masonathletics.com and get the information there. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Mr. Lawrence?
Couple things. The Foundation had its meeting last night. Big thing is, everybody write down, May 20th is the gala. They're already in good standing with tickets, but please either attend or, it's my wife's birthday that day, so I will not be going there, but I will buy tickets for teachers. So May 20th, go to fcedf.org, and you can order them online very, very easily. Last week, Special Ed Committee met. We had training from the VDOE consultants, went for about 90 minutes, a lot of discussion. A lot of members came up to me after and said they really wish they had had that in the fall. So it went well. We have the, we have it recorded, and also I'll circulate his PowerPoint. He gave us the same PowerPoint he gives everybody throughout the state, and it went, it went very, very well. Just want to remind people again about fundraising for robotics in the next two weeks. Please help them. And my son's not in robotics, but I mean, my God, how many times does somebody get to go to the world championship? So, and other than that, you've heard us talk about the budgets, but please speak out to your City Council members, because we are facing some serious problems. If we do not get our requests, if we get our request, we're still 250 in the hole with our insurance problem, and we need you to speak out one way or another. And if you have any questions, contact any of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Webb?
Thank you very much. Met with the Parks and Recs, and they are working on continuing getting forward, moving with the master plan for the redo of Big Chimneys Park. There was also some conversation about the potential, working with Fairfax County, of turfing parts of, what is the park over, Roberts, I think that's Roberts, but I can't even remember the park. The park off Hillwood Avenue, Lair Graves. I knew that was right up my tongue. But redo is doing Lair Graves to give some additional possibility of practice fields for soccer teams, because we are continuing to give those soccer teams very little practice time, maybe once a week or for an hour at a time, 45 minutes. So that is, continues to be a big problem here in the city of finding practice space for, for our athletes here in town. And they also just hired a new administrative assistant over there, so it's getting, they are back up to full staff, and I will commend them, because it's a lot of coming in at the ground level and learning, and they do a lot of promoting within or in the Parks Department, so it's a really good thing. And the other great news is, the daycare advisor committee is, since I've, this is my second year doing that, is finally up to a full committee coming. So we'll be able to do and conduct more business now, because we will have more potential to have quorums there now. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Ms. Gill?
The only committee that I'm on that's met since our last meeting is the Business in Education. We voted for the VSBA, Virginia School Board Association, business honor roll among businesses in our community that have really supported our schools and gone above and beyond, and Tori McKinney, Rock's Real Estate, Clarence Don's Restaurant in Ireland's four-piece, made the honor roll. Falls Church Honor Businesses, where Columbia Baptist Church, Spend Your Self Food, Pantry and Gardens, Pivotal Point, the Gaskins Team, and Original Pancake House. And Rookie of the Year is Growing Smiles Pediatric Dentistry, which provided helmets for all of our students at Jesse Thackeray, so they can learn how to ride tricycles, which is really exciting. We also discussed creating a website, a freecycle-type clearinghouse for teacher supply needs and community donations. And Mary Beth Connolly is going to add it to the list of things that maybe a student could create for us, because I am unsophisticated and said perhaps we could use a listserv. And she said, maybe we could do a website, and a student could do that as a project. So look forward to that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gill. Mr. Riding?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few brief ones. Since the last time I had a chance to talk on advisory committees, I did attend to I did attend a support employees advisory committee meeting, which was somewhat sparsely attended. But I had, the issue that was, took up most of the discussion, I think, was one that I, I understand is perennial, which is the question of benefits for part-time staff. And I fully understand that. I know it's outside the budget this year, but I, I continue to think it's something that we ought to look at, because we all know how important benefits are. And it's something that would mean a lot to our part-time staff, such as bus drivers, if we can ever get to the place where we can afford that. We had high school and the middle school had a joint PTA session about the Unified Schedule Proposal from the principals of TJ and MEH. The presentations were, of course, very well done, as you would expect from the two ties. But there remains, I think, a fair amount of concern among the parents who attended, particularly about early rising for high school seniors, even though, sorry, for high school students, even though the time would not move earlier under the proposal. The wasted time, you know, before and after school. And then the, the increased amount of traffic if there's a common arrival time. So I know that the two principals are continuing to work with the community, but I wanted to express to the board what had happened at the meeting. The Health and Wellness Committee has not met since last I reported, but an issue has come up for the agenda next time, and that is, there have been some expressions of concern from elementary school parents about a desire to increase the amount of physical education time in elementary school. Of course, there's, and again, it's hard to fit anything into the school day, but it's something that the Health and Wellness Committee has looked at before, but will be on the agenda for the next meeting. And the last, just to reiterate, although it's not an advisory committee question, what Mr. Lawrence was saying. You know, I've spent some time thinking through the budget and what the outcomes are. And I see no way that significant reductions could be made without an increase in class sizes. So that's simply what the bargain, I think, will end up. If the schools get less money, it will mean larger class sizes. And people need to be aware of that and express their opinions accordingly. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. I spoke at the town hall on Saturday. And it was a snowy, cold day. Attendance was, at least live attendance was accordingly, I think, affected by that. But always good to keep discussing the issues and how things are arrayed. I do think it is important that everyone understand that we do work very hard to devise a budget that's responsible, and also that meets the needs of our stakeholders, and above all, the needs of our students. I continue to look forward to working with our colleagues on city council to get to a satisfactory resolution. I attended last night's city council meeting, and heard their thoughts about the budget as well as the RFP. And I look forward to working them, with them on that as well. And I would also like to thank Mr. Lawrence for filling in more often than I would like, because of some family issues that I continue to be working through that take me out of town from time to time. So I thank him for that, and I thank you all for your understanding and patience. And with that, we will move on now to the approval of minutes. I would seek unanimous consent to approve minutes from January 12th, February 16th, February 23rd, March 1st, March 8th, 8th, March 14th, March 15th, and March 29th. Without objection, so ordered. Now we come to our closed meeting. I thank everyone for their persistence and staying power and staying with us. We will go into closed meeting. I do not anticipate that it will. Oh, excuse me. Dr. Jones, Dr. Jones reminded me that we have Bob Jones from Arcadis in the audience. And when we were having a discussion of some of the issues relating to the George Mason Project, we failed to call him up and get his thoughts. And for somebody who has to drive back to Gettysburg, that would be a grave oversight. So please, Mr. Jones, welcome, and my apologies.
Just one issue I heard discussed that I wanted to touch on and clarify.
Is your mic on, Mr. Jones?
The green light's on.
Green light, okay, good.
Is the, the competition aspect of only having two proposers? A lot of the PPEA process is structured, I mean, a lot of times, there'll be only one proposer. A lot of unsolicited proposals that are received and accepted generally will only have one proposer. But we, in this case, where you have two proposers, at the detailed phase, they're submitting what we call the construction cost limit. So at that point, it's the maximum, they're guaranteeing that they can complete the project for that maximum cost or less. And then the way that the agreement is structured is that the whole design process and the whole process is geared to the competition to reduce cost as we go along. And that doesn't mean cutting. It means that, once you get through negotiations and you get your comprehensive agreement, the only costs at that point are, that are fixed will be the architect's fee and the developer's fee. And those are the only two fixed costs at that point. Now, I understand, you know, if you were thinking that it's more of a lump sum. Yeah, if it was a lump sum type contract, then only having two bidders would be, you know, a concern. But with the PPEA, it's all open book. So every other cost except the architect's fee and the developer's fee is all open book. As you work through the process and get to more like the 65% GMP. So when they're putting that together, they have to show us where they've gone to a minimum of three subcontractors for each part of the project, and they've gotten three bids. And so there's a lot of room and a lot of competition through the process to get the price down. And then the, the whole idea of the shared savings, where whatever savings that we have left over when the project is done, gets split between, you know, developer gets a small piece, and the schools get the big piece. But there's that incentive through the whole process for the developer to bring down the cost. And I just didn't want the idea that whatever cost that they would give us at the detailed phase is the cost of the project.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Any questions for him on that? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
And have a good, safe drive home.
All right. See you.
All right. And with that, we will now step into closed meeting. I do not believe it will be lengthy, Dr. Jones. What did you estimate?
We do have a couple of topics on here tonight.
So we'll be?
I really can't estimate, because I don't know the questions the school board will ask.
Okay. Well, we will, we will work as quickly as possible, so. And thank you all for coming out this evening. And for those who are leaving, good night. And for those who are staying, we're, we're working hard, so. Closed meeting, sorry, certify the closed meeting, please.
Mr. Chairman, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification applies. And two, only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard discussed or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. So have a second. Thank you, Mr. Webb. Would you call the role, Ms. Goodell?
Yes. Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gill's not here. Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Mr. Ward? And Ms. Webb? Ms. Ward? Mr. Webb?
I know what you're about to do, yes.
What she said. All right, thank you all. Now we come to the consent agenda. I would seek unanimous consent to adopt the consent agenda? Thank you, without objection, so ordered. And now we come to materials for board review. Dr. Jones, we have, you want to elaborate briefly on the enrollment?
Yes, I can be brief. We do have the enrollment sheet that you see every month, so if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. And just the final report from the General Assembly, that Lila worked on so hard for us. So just wanted to make sure those were available for your review.
Thank you very much. And I think at this point, we are now in adjournment. So thank you all for your staying power. I was, I was hopeful we would make it out before 10:00, and I was wrong. So have a good evening, and thank you all.